Coffee County Board of Education. It is going to be a long meeting tonight, so all the folks out there in YouTube land may want to order in pizza if they're going to watch the whole meeting. We are going to get started here with Ms. Yentz is going to say a prayer for us.
Our Father, Lord Almighty, we come before you and we give this meeting over to you. We name you over this school board meeting tonight. We ask that your Holy Spirit would be present in this meeting, the Spirit of wisdom, the Spirit of understanding, the Spirit of guidance. We ask that you would guide us in the decisions that we make tonight, that they wouldn't be made by us, but they would be made by your Spirit, that we do the best for our county, for our teachers, for our students, and for the staff. And we just ask that in Jesus' name. Amen.
All right, we say the Pledge of Allegiance, and we're going to have the volleyball team come and lead the pledge for us. Please stand. All right. Whenever you're ready.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, one pride, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you very much. All right, we have some changes in our student ambassadors tonight. The other ones are preparing for the basketball tournament, so we have Lauren Shelton and Amelia Thomas are gracing us with their presence tonight, so welcome and thank you. All right, with that, we have a presentation from Coffee County Education Foundation Association. Ms. Sizmore, is she here?
Yes.
Oh, okay. Come on up to the mic.
I am Brenda Brown. I am director or the chairperson for the Coffee County Education Foundation. So I would like, since most of you are fairly new, I would like to introduce some of our board members. We have Brent Parsley, Ronnie Gray, Tom Arkham, and then Barbara Arp and Stan Gerald could not be here tonight. So on behalf of the Coffee County Education Foundation, we want to present this check to Jonah Sizmore. Yeah, and we understand the use of this money will go to our reading and math coaches to enhance the education system.
Tell them how much we got.
Oh, $7,000.
Wow.
And we'll need a photo op.
Thank you.
And this is it. Do you put this up here or back here? It doesn't matter. Thank you guys so much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Brenda. Appreciate it.
All right, next up, we have some recognitions. So first up is Brenda Ramirez from the American Heart Association.
Brenda, will you come up here, Brenda? Oh, I'm sorry. Brenda Ramirez. The American Heart Association would like to say thank you. It's a pleasure to honor you for acting so courageously and swiftly to offer life-saving aid. Today, many Americans feel helpless during an emergency because they do not know how to administer CPR, or they are afraid of hurting the victim. We want to recognize heroes that have stepped in to save a life. Thank you for performing the heroic act of the Heimlich maneuver, a critical link in our chain of survival. You have not only helped save a life with your community, but you are also partnering with the American Heart Association to improve the survival rate of citizens who receive bystander CPR. Thank you so much. It is an amazing thing to say that you saved a life at Deerfield Elementary, and we are so honored that you're with us. Thank you.
All right, next up, we have the Coffee County Middle School volleyball team, so come on up to the mic and make sure you get everybody up here too, because we're going to want their pictures.
So first, we want to thank the board for taking the time to recognize our players. I'm Coach Tori Adams, and then my sister is Coach Maddie McKenzie, and so we just want to talk a little bit about our historical season. We had an overall record of 21-7. We were first place regular season, second place CTC tournament, second place area champions, first place sectional champions, and then we made our first state appearance ever, and we did get our first state win. And this was actually only the second year that they've offered this state tournament, so it was pretty cool to make it just within the second year. So if you guys could give a round of applause for these girls and their hard work. Thank you.
All right, now we have our general call to order, and this brings the meeting to order. First order of business is public comment. We have three people on the public comment list, so Mindy Aiken, is that right? Oh, all right, I'm sorry, I stand corrected. I couldn't read it.
My name is Mindy Acklin. I'm a teacher at Coffee County High School. I'm here this evening concerning the proposal for a system-wide athletic director position. Although I support athletic programs, these funds could benefit students in other areas. At the work session, I listened as our school system was compared to other systems. After researching the systems mentioned, I discovered they have multiple high schools, some as many as nine to 11 high schools, not including their middle and elementary schools. I also listened as it was stated that athletics represents approximately 25% of the students in our system. I'm here this evening to speak for the other 75%. Every student in our system deserves a chance to succeed and flourish, even those with no athletic ability. In our system, numerous student organizations receive zero support from the budget. These organizations do not have the luxury of stadiums, fields, and jumbotron's to seek advertisement dollars. The state discourages us from the formation of booster clubs. We rely solely on fundraising and donations, funds that are difficult to seek after businesses support and advertise with athletic organizations. At the high school alone, we have the following organizations: Beta Club, Skills USA, DECA, FBLA, HOSA, Interact, Art Club, Raider Creators, Criminal Justice Club, Mock Trial Club, FCCLA, Drama, and FFA. These organizations currently have memberships that total over 800 members. They teach professionalism, life skills, and soft skills. They foster confidence and give students a sense of belonging. Advisors and teachers donate hundreds of hours outside of school hours to prepare these students for competitions, community service opportunities, and fundraising. The majority of these individuals receive no stipend or salary for their time. These advisors also reach into their pockets to provide clothing, membership fees, and travel fees for those who cannot afford it yet deserve the opportunity. Imagine what the proposed salary of the athletic director could do for these organizations, and how many children could benefit from those funds? How many students could benefit from participating in these activities but do not sign up because they cannot afford the membership fees, the travel fees, or the contest fees? The benefits from these organizations allow students to beat the odds by reaching outside the bounds of the only life that they have known to see what's available to them. We have traveled with students who have never left the limits of Coffee County, never stayed in a hotel, never eaten in a sit-down restaurant, or never flown in an airplane. I have seen a young woman from a difficult background overcome with emotion as she stood in front of the United States Constitution and wept. I have seen numerous students who lack the confidence to look up in class, compete and represent themselves in our school in a speech competition, or presentation, or railing against a witness in a mock trial competition. One young man from a home with a mentally ill mother who also struggled in math and English stood on a podium and accepted his gold medal. He went on to rank eighth in the nation. He used his scholarship to attend a community college and is now happy and successful, married, with a family. We have witnessed students succeed time and again despite the odds stacked against them. At these events, students connect with other students and adults who offer professional contacts for their future. One young man was awarded a scholarship because he shared his experiences with a stranger on an airplane. Another young lady was awarded a scholarship and a position as a Skills USA officer at the post-secondary level because she impressed a Tennessee Board of Regents member by sharing her love for her organization as she shared a bus seat. Athletics is not the only space for students to learn teamwork, perseverance, and a sense of belonging. Participation in these organizations fosters academic achievement and encourages students to perform better in their classes. The board members have spoken for months now about how they want to advance our system and put students at the forefront. To accomplish this, you must support not only the 25%, but all students by funding all opportunities. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we have Amanda McCain.
As much as I don't want to be here publicly, there are two reasons that I have to be. One, I can't teach advocacy to my students if I am unwilling to advocate for myself. Number two, I cannot resolve this behind closed doors as it would be a disservice to myself and the community. I commend you for allowing this to be a platform to be utilized for concerns and free speech, but I do not appreciate the lack of protocol being followed. I will always be a champion for parents, students, and teachers, however, I will not be a proponent of public slander due to the breach of those protocols. I have prayed a lot about this, and while all of your lives moved on from October with no thoughts toward that event, I had to simultaneously deal with that while also moving forward. And as I prayed about it, I was given 1 Peter 3:11, "Let him turn away from evil and do good; let him seek peace and pursue it." So this is me seeking peace and pursuing it. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak today, though I know it wasn't easy. I stand before you not only as an educator, but as someone who deeply cares about the well-being of my students and the integrity of the community we're all part of. I have dedicated my entire life to teaching, mentoring, and inspiring young minds, and I take great pride in this district. However, today I must address something that has shaken me personally. It has also reverberated through the educational community as others have questioned, how could what happened in October happen so easily? And what if it happens to me? And I am thankful that while this was a horrific event to me personally, that my reputation supersedes anything that was said, but there was no regard for consequences moving forward. Mistakes were made, policies were ignored, and by allowing those breaches, you've not only failed me, but you have failed the entire community. When protocols are ignored, it creates a ripple effect. Protocols are put in place to be a veil in which people are protected on all sides. It's the bridge to ensure that due diligence has been done to ensure not just any parent, any student, or any teacher can bypass those rules to utilize this as the public speaking box anytime there is a disagreement or disgruntle. A parent publicly slandered my character and questioned my dignity, and I want to be clear. I have always acted in the best interest of my students, fostering an environment where students can feel safe, supported, and inspired to grow. And I've also instilled values, consequences, and I've treated all my students fairly in a socially and emotionally driven environment. Firstly, I want to address Protocol 1.404, which explicitly mandates that the board convene, or the executive board convene, to approve items on the agenda before they're acted upon. This protocol is not merely a formality, it's a cornerstone of governance that ensures accountability and due diligence in the decision-making process. However, in this instance, the board did not convene in a timely and proper manner, and by not adhering to that protocol, it created an environment where decisions were made without proper scrutiny, which led to unjust outcomes for those affected me. Moreover, I must express my deep concern for 5.502. That protocol is equally vital, as it guarantees that employees are informed of complaints against them and are given the opportunity to respond and give their side, present facts, and to defend themselves with integrity. It's our responsibility to ensure that every individual in our district is treated with fairness, not only out of respect for that individual, but also to uphold our school system. This denial of due process is a direct violation of that policy and an appalling failure to uphold the rights of me or any educator. No one, whether in the classroom or any other profession, should be subjected to slander or judgment without the chance to respond to those allegations. In this instance, not only was a complaint raised and foundly, but I faced public slander based on mere allegations rather than facts. This kind of public defamation, especially when rooted in hearsay, is not only damaging to the individual involved, but also harmful to the overall morale of our staff, the trust in students, and the reputation of our district. It contradicts the principles of fairness, respect, and professional integrity that we should be fostering within our educational community. But the great thing is reflection's a beautiful tool, and we all can possess it and use it to our advantage. In conclusion, I urge you all to reflect deeply on that situation. Let us collectively recommit to following our established protocols with integrity and transparency. Let us make it our mission to uphold fairness and due process, ensuring that every voice is heard and every individual treated with respect that they deserve. We must protect our educators, support our students, and preserve the trust of our community at the same time. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McCain. Next up, we have Dr. Charles Lawson.
My name's Charles Lawson. I live at 2889 Henry Cove Road in Manchester, and I am here to speak about Budget Amendment 10. Now, Budget Amendment 10 is the one that moves money in order to pay the salary for the interim director of schools. As most of you know, in October, my time as director ended, and a new one had to be found. Oh, and I'm sorry, the first thing I wanted to say was thank you to the board chair for allowing me to speak and exercise my rights as a citizen. The last time I tried to come in here for a group of, for a gathering of the board, he tried to deny my access, so I appreciate him not trying to do so this time. But on this, basically, conditions have been created that no matter what I say about this budget amendment, it has to proceed. I just want to make sure the board understands it is unnecessary, and that's the statement I wanted to say this evening. Even for whatever reason, that vote was taken, but the director of schools and the board interact a few times a month at the most, and so that could have proceeded forward. We could have proceeded to work together, and it would not have cost the district an extra $100,000. But I will say that it's not all negative from a personal standpoint. I have enjoyed, I enjoyed a beach trip at Christmas, a trip to Alaska two weeks ago, and that kind of thing that I would have never had before, otherwise, I wouldn't have the time. So that's a positive for me, but as a taxpayer, I find that it was a move that was inadvisable, expensive, and unnecessary. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Lawson. All right, next up, we have principal reports, so I guess you guys are probably all arm-wrestled in the back to see who was going to go first. I guess you didn't. Mr. Parsley.
Good evening. It's springtime, and there are lots of things going on at the high school as any other season, but there are some new things. We are finishing up some seasons, and we are starting some seasons along about this week. We also have lots of activities going on during the school day right now. I'm happy to report, and I think most of you are aware, that we have four of our student government students that will be attending what's referred to as Scope tomorrow. Of course, that will be in Nashville, and our four SGA students will have opportunity to interact as if they were school board members. I'm excited that they are getting to do that, and I know you all are as well, and my understanding is that they will report about that experience, I believe, next month. Those kids, again, are excited about it. I spoke with one of them today. Also want you all to be aware that there's an organization, a national organization called Rachel's Challenge that is going to be coming to Coffee County Central High School next Tuesday on the 18th. Rachel's Challenge was founded by the family of a young lady named Rachel who passed away over 20 years ago now, and she was one of the victims at Columbine. And so that tells you a little bit about what that organization is about. We had the organization in about five years ago, and that was at an expense at that time, that we did pay for that. Fortunately, this time, I received a phone call a couple of weeks ago, and there was a donor that was willing to give $5,000 so that Coffee County Central High School could receive the Rachel's Challenge program again this year. And I have no idea who that donor is. I don't know if they live here locally, could be out of state, but they called us up, and I quickly accepted that. And so next Tuesday, we'll have a school-wide assembly from a couple of presenters with Rachel's Challenge. The thrust of that program is anti-violence, and really, it's about creating a chain reaction of kindness, of compassion through school-wide initiatives. And so we'll have an hour-long assembly late morning next Tuesday, and in the afternoon, we will have a, we're going to call it a club meeting. There'll be about 100 students involved, because that's what they allow us to invite, and what they'll be talking with us about are school-wide activities that we can do that would really push that kindness and compassion throughout our school, and again, hopefully have a chain reaction where it would just continue on inevitably through the years. So although we've got lots of great things going on at the high school, we certainly want to continue to push kindness and compassion. I'm excited about that program, and you all would be welcome to come next Tuesday. I think about 10:45 is when we'll begin. If you're interested in coming for that program, reach out to me, and I can definitely talk with you and would love to have you, okay? That's really all I wanted to share. Again, there are lots of things that our ambassadors will share a little bit later in the evening, okay? Any questions for me?
Any questions for Mr. Parsley?
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Mr. Parsley.
First of all, I'd like to say how proud I am of Ms. Nicole Ramirez, our teacher's assistant, who you recognized earlier, so thank you for that. We could not do without our assistants, and we're a family, and we work all together as a team, and their role in our school is so, so very important. So the first thing I got to say is we are having an opera performance for National Opera is March 14th at 9:30, so I had one of the board members reach out and ask about that, that they would like to attend that, so I invited all of you to come if you would like to. It's this Friday, the 14th, at 9:30. Ms. Mary McCartney has arranged for that, and so she's set all that up and organized it and got the arts in there. We also have the second grade going to the Nashville Zoo. We have the third quarter behavior celebrations, where we recognize all the students who have excellent behavior. We can have quite a few of those, I might add, because we have great kids at Deerfield, very well behaved. And we also have the spring concert. I had the board member reach out and ask about that. That is April 3rd at 6 o'clock at night, so that also is arranged by and organized by Ms. Mary McCartney, our music teacher. She also has a ukulele club, and she has had them, they are going to perform at Autumn Oaks, April 5th at 1:45, if you'd like to go see them there. She has really done a lot for our music program at school, at our school. And I call it a program because with her there, it truly is a program with everything that she does. We also have our Easter lunch on the April 9th. April 11th, the first grade's going to the zoo. We also have math night with Ms. Janice Tally on April 8th from 5:30 to 7:00. She's our math coach, and she comes out and she has a math family engagement evening, and where the kids just kind of get with their family and their parents and things and work on math skills, games, and things like that where they learn. It's a real fun evening, and I think this year, she said she's going to focus on geometry. And also, we begin TCAP testing on April 14th. So after that, when that begins, we kind of pause everything else and focus on testing. And then we have fun after that.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Parsley. All right. Dr. Crabtree has nothing, so Dr. Anderson, nothing, so you're just here for the fun of it? Okay. All right, so principals' reports are done, so we now have the call for intent. So at this point, we'd like to approve the general consent items, which are the minutes from the February 4th and February 12th meetings, and then the consent agenda items. Mr. Gilli.
Ms. Chair, I'd like to amend the agenda by adding a number 20, which includes the, it's labeled in our documents as number seven, Lady Raider Basketball. I think it's an overnight.
Okay.
Trip approval.
So we will put that on the agenda as item 20, and we also had a request to move the textbook adoption to the general agenda, so that would be item 21. Any further changes to the consent agenda? Any? Yes?
Do you want to remove a Budget Amendment, number 18?
Remove Budget.
I need to remove it. I didn't need to use that number.
Okay.
Please, everything is another one.
That's fine.
Doesn't exist.
So we'll just leave that blank, instead of renumbering everything. All right. Any other changes to the consent agenda? All right, with that, I need a motion to pass the consent agenda.
I also move.
Mr. Hensert? Second?
I'll second it.
And Ms. Jones seconds it. All right, any discussion on this? All right, let's start with Ms. Jones.
Aye.
Ms. Hodge.
Aye.
Ms. Matthews.
Aye.
Mr. Coon.
Aye.
Mr. Gilli.
Aye.
Mr. Cordell.
Aye.
Ms. Yentz.
Aye.
Mr. Hensert.
Aye.
And I will vote aye, that passes 9 to 0. We have everybody here. All right, so the consent agenda item is passed. The first action item then is the resolution on teacher bonuses, and this is your item number one here. This is a, and Dr. Powell, maybe you can fill us in on this item.
Yes, sir. As you well know, the General Assembly passed what is known as the Freedom Act, which basically is tuition for students in private schools. It will, I think there's been maybe 10,000 students in a low economic section, and also another 10,000 for generally anyone else. When the resolution was, excuse me, when the bill was passed, there was an amendment in there that said that teachers would be able to get a $2,000 one-time money. This was changed somewhat to the amendments you see here or to our resolution. What we're saying is that the board will accept the money, the $2,000, for our teachers, but you'll also notice in the last paragraph that it says that even though we may accept the $2,000 per teacher, we do not necessarily agree with the Freedom Act. And that was put in, the $2,000 would go to teachers only, no administrators, no principals, no supervisors. It would be teachers only. Based on reports that we send to the state, they will pull those names out and send those back to us. That money will come in, if you approve this, the money will come in, and it'll be a flow-through from our budget into the teachers that are recognized as being able to get this. So what you're doing, what you're going, if you approve this, is to agree that we'll accept the $2,000 per teacher. but we don't necessarily agree with the law itself.
Okay, so I need a motion to approve the
So move.
Second.
Okay, Mr. Gilli and Mr. Cordell? All right.
If it hadn't have been for the last sentence of that last paragraph, I wouldn't.
Do what, Robert?
If it hadn't have been for the last sentence in the last paragraph.
I would agree.
I agree.
I think we all agree on that one, so.
Dr. Powell, I think it should be made known that it's only classroom teachers. Is that correct? It's not?
Not necessarily classroom. Any, in the report that we file with the state, we have to classify people as teachers, administrators, supervisors. So from what I understand, that counselors or anyone that's identified as a teacher in this list will receive this money. It doesn't spell out classroom teachers. This is the report, and I think, if I'm not mistaken, Mr. Blasing still here? He gone? Okay.
Did you have something, Ms. Milson?
I was just going to help if he needed it. I will receive a roster on April the 15th, and we'll have to review that roster to make sure, I'll review it with the principals to make sure everyone's on it, and then we can make changes to that roster. But it, well, I learned in my, I went to a fiscal conference on Thursday, and I learned that it will be anybody that's evaluated. So we're not sure what that means yet. That's just the language that was used. But I will give, only given that roster, we'll have a chance to review it, and then revise it if we need to, and then make changes. We'll get another one May 15th to review again, and then it has to be finalized by June the 15th.
So to answer your question, Ms. Jones, it may not necessarily just mean classroom teachers. It's anyone that's classified as a teacher in our system. And that could be school counselors. Probably, that's pretty much the list of classroom teachers and school counselors. I don't know if there's anyone else. April, you know of anyone else that'd be included as a teacher?
That, Dr. Powell, that list is going to be generated from TN Compass.
Right.
That's where we generate our LOE scores for teachers. There's three classifications: supervisors, administrators, and teachers. So everyone in that program that's classified as a teacher would be eligible for this money.
I know there was some discussion at our, you know, our law conference, and a lot of people went away thinking that it was only teachers that actually had a classroom with students.
Yes, I think that was the understa, well, the misunderstanding, I guess, that we had. But it's been clarified, as Mr. Westmoreland said, anyone that we classify in this report as a teacher will get that money. And that would exclude everyone except administrators, supervisors, and
Those are the only three categories, Dr. Powell.
What was it, Charles?
Administrators, supervisors, and teachers.
Yeah.
They have to be classified as one of those three.
And I have one other question. Because we're not agreeing with the Freedom Act, can they, can the state deny us that? Because I know other school systems are doing the same thing we are. Is there, is there a way they will deny that money?
That I don't know. This policy, this resolution was sent to us by TSBA, and their attorneys say that it will fly. As it is, yes. That we will still get the money. Now, that doesn't mean that legislature can't call a special session or do something to nullify it. But as it stands right now, that's our understanding, yes. And this has gone through the legal process of TSBA attorneys, and I assume at some point in time that they've talked with the State Board of Education Attorneys or Department of Education Attorneys. But from the state level, Ms. Jones, we don't know. Right now, that's what we think we know.
Who can predict the legislature?
Dr. Powell, who makes that qualification for us? Who makes the qualification? Yeah. Who does that for us? It's sent in the report that Mr. Westmoreland mentioned. We make it out, we send it to the state, they look at it and approve it as such, and send those names back to us. So basically, everyone except the three categories: administrators, supervisors, and teachers. So that's how that comes about. So you've got to be in one of those three categories if you're in the school system. Now, we're not sure, Charles, about psychologists. Is that true?
Psychologists are classified as teachers.
Okay.
So I get the list from principals each year of their staff in their building. And I go into TN Compass, and I code those people to what positions they're in. So I take care of all of that. There's two times it gets done. It gets done in December, and it gets done in June. So I'm the one, I gather all of the staff lists from the, each elementary school and each secondary. And I go into TN Compass and code those people to what grade they're teaching, what subject they're teaching. I code everyone.
What about? We will check and recheck our list to make sure that all of our teachers are included in the report. Office people, stuff like that, what category would they be in? What classification? They're not, they're classified, not certified. These are certified. Certified, what certification would they be in? Well, if they're certified, if they've got teacher certification, if they've got a state license to teach. So if they don't, they don't get? Well, we don't have anybody, as far as I know, right now, in our system that is not either under a permit or is certified. Okay. And they're loosening the requirements right now. There's a program that the state has. If normally, a student, a student would have to go through training and then do a student training or have a student teaching program. Right now, if we have a student that's finished all of their classwork, are ready for their student teaching, if we've got a place for them, we can get a waiver from the state to let their teaching as a regular teacher count as their student teaching to take care of that requirement. So that's some of the permits that they're having. But yes, again, they have to be certified, or they have to receive permits from the state in order to be classified as a teacher. Thank you.
I want to put my own protest in there. I want our teachers to have this. I really do. I don't want them to miss out on anything that's a possibility for them. But I don't appreciate the state trying to bribe us into what they want us to do. And I just felt the need to protest that. But I'll vote on it, because I want our teachers to have it. But it is, it is a state bribe, and I don't like that.
That has been
I agree.
That has been spoken by directors of schools since this was adopted, since this legislature was adopted. Well, I agree.
All right, any further discussion?
Thank you, Beth.
All right, let's vote on the approving the teacher bonus resolution. Start with Ms. Hodge? Ms. Matthews?
Aye.
Mr. Coon?
Aye.
Mr. Gilli?
Aye.
Mr. Cordell?
Aye.
Ms. Yent?
Aye.
Mr. Hanser?
Absolutely, yes.
And Ms. Jones? And I will vote aye, that passes nine to zero. All right, next item on the agenda is the daycare program. And this was something that we looked at last year. We voted not to approve it, but it was, I think Ms. Hodge had put it down to have us relook at it again in a year. And so it has cropped up on our agenda. And Ms. Sizmore, did you want to talk to us about this, or?
Yes, sure. I can answer any questions you guys have.
You should have those numbers in front of you.
Yeah, we got the numbers on, yeah.
So you guys have the numbers in front of you there. Really, I just can answer any questions if you guys have any questions. We had a total of 13 interested children, which is, we had done it last February, and we had 43 interested people. And so then, that's why Dr. Lawson and I kind of pursued it. And then we sent out the survey last, or in August, we only had 10. And then this last survey, we only had 13 people that are interested in employee childcare.
How many spots would be available? Like, how many did you want to be interested?
I didn't really have, like, a number in my head. But, I mean, based, you can see on the ages, there is like a max number, like, for one staff per six kids for 12 to 18 months. And so based on what the numbers we would have, we would have to hire the full-time manager, a full-time caregiver, and then four part-time workers, just to cover that number of students. And there'd still be room in there to add more children, but there's no guarantee that even these 13 would attend, because several of the comments that were in there was like, well, this is contingent on if my student gets into pre-k, or this is contingent on the cost, things like that as well, so.
Do we have a motion for this? Well, either to approve or not to approve.
You have to have a motion on the floor to get debate.
Right. I'll make a motion to.
To? Motion to approve?
Yep, motion to approve.
Okay, Mr. Hanser makes a motion to approve. Do we have a second?
Can I, I'm a little confused. What are we, what is the motion? What are we approving? I'm a little bit lost here.
To see, I guess what I'm making a motion for is to, so that we can have a discussion about this.
Just to discuss it.
So your motion is to approve the daycare program?
Right, so that we can have a discussion. We have to approve it to discuss it, right?
Right, right, we need to have a motion on the floor to discuss.
Second, it's titled.
Yeah, we need a second right now.
If it doesn't, it isn't.
Yeah.
And then we vote on it.
Yeah. If there's no second, it just dies for lack of motion, so.
So motion to discuss.
Well, the motion is to approve.
It's, you've got to have a motion to approve or not approve to open the floor for discussion, if it's properly seconded.
Yes.
Yeah.
Gotcha.
So we're looking for a second. Hearing done, the motion dies for lack of a second, and we move on to, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So I guess my question is, is so we're finished with pursuing this as of now, or just in general completely? Yeah, okay.
Well, this year, anyway.
Okay, so, okay, I just want to make sure that that's, because I just want to communicate with the teachers that that's a no. I just want to make sure that that's very clear.
Can I say this?
Sure. Yep.
The reason I made a motion to approve this was because I'm getting people, or teachers that has called me and said, "Look, we would like to do this, but we don't know what, whether we're going to have it or not. We've got to have some type of commitment that we're going to do this." And that's why I was making a motion to, at least to approve it, so that we could discuss it. And then if we voted it down, then that was okay. But that was the main reason why I was doing it, is our teachers, am I right, Ms. Sizmore? Just a lot of, they don't know what we're going to do. And there's a lot of undecided, a lot of questions, and
There have been some questions, but I've addressed those as they have came up. Like, we know the location would be at New Union. We had settled on a cost for, you know, last year, things like that, so.
Yes, ma'am.
They understand, I think, the basics have been communicated, and questions have been answered. I've answered questions as they have came in.
Yes, you've worked on this diligently, and thank you for two years.
I mean, there's been a Yeah, there's been a lot, so that's why I just kind of, you know, want a clear, you know, yes, we're just going to stop this now, maybe look at it in the future, but, because, yes, teachers just want to know, and we we're holding a classroom at New Union, we've had fire inspections, health inspections, and so I would rather just give them a clear answer about, you can put a classroom in that room and move on.
And thank you, I'll thank you as well.
All right, thank you so much.
Can I? I'd just like to know how many employees
What's that?
I would like to know how many employees that actually, you know, we got the kids, but how many employees did it? But it doesn't matter at this point.
Right. We died for lack of motion. Okay. The next item on the agenda is the director's salary range. We discussed this in the Director's Search Committee. And on your packet, we have the minutes from March 4th, 2025, where we discussed this. And we gave, well, it was, we had a few folks missing, but we really talked about a salary range of 175 to 185, with a performance bonus of 10,000 divided into $2,500 increments for four goals, performance goals. And that is what we put into the draft contract that we'll consider a little bit later. And that is basically what we need a motion to approve tonight, is that salary range. Now, keep in mind that the applications close this Friday. We, to date, have 11 applicants, and you should have all had that by email. TSBA is sending it out to everybody. There's 11 applicants as of last Friday. So I would need a motion to approve a salary range of 175 to 185. Also, something that came into consideration, so you should know, is the director in Tullahoma gets 192,000 or 193, somewhere in that range. So that entered into the discussion as well on March 4th. So I would need a motion to approve that salary range.
I make that motion?
Ms. Jones?
I'll second.
Mr. Hanser seconds. Do we have discussion?
Yes, I'd like to say something. I've run some numbers on the list of, you know, all the school systems in the state. And just a kind of a quick rundown. You know, there's 141 school systems and school districts in the state. Enrollment-wise, we're ranked number 52. In the current salary, we're ranked number 58. If what you're proposing of 175 to 185,000 dollar salary there, you have the, that does not include the $6,000 travel expense. So you add that to it, at 175, that brings it up to 181,000 guaranteed. If you with that proposed salary, that would put us at number 21 out of the state. That's in the top 15%. And the rest of the schools in that districts, in that top 15%, have a enrollment of, an average enrollment of 27,335 students. I think, personally myself, I think that we're severely reaching with that pay scale. If you, the average for the school districts with 4,000 to 5,000 enrollment currently, that averages 152,000, $277 is what their average pay in their director. And if you look at our district within the state, our South Central District, district which the state puts us in, that average director's salary is 142,998 dollars. And there are several districts in there that's much larger than we are. But with that being said, I just would like to, you know, say that I believe that those numbers are a little high.
Thank you, Mr. Coon. Any other comments? Mr. Gilli? Is that a hand raise, or just a figure?
I can go last, or, no, I don't care. In your list, where's Manchester at? Where?
Number 52.
That was just
Well, what, on enrollment, or?
No.
Oh, Manchester?
Yeah, the director's pay, I think y'all just
It was, it was, well, the last record that was on the list, it was well behind
Well, I just wondered where it was. Was it 138, 140?
I thought it was around 145.
Yeah, it's 145 for the next
So Manchester is at 145. Does the list, your list show Tullahoma's, I think?
192.
192 in Tullahoma?
I figured it, that there's, Coffee County pays approximately 484,000 for director salaries. And we are the lowest of the three, as of today.
Yeah.
And we are the largest of the three.
And we have 11 schools in a very complex network of a lot of happenings. We are a supersized system for this area. I think that's all I got.
Any other comment?
I'd like to say something.
Sure.
Um, I tend to agree with Mr. Coon. I feel like we are reaching, um, I guess one thing that, um, I would maybe like to see us reconsider is that six thousand dollar travel expense. I'm assuming that means there's no, uh, expense form ever required. It's just a way to tack on an extra six thousand regardless of whether there's travel or not. And like he said, by the time you add that travel expense onto the base salary, uh, that gets you up to one eighty-one. And then possible bonuses could be, so it has a potential to be one ninety-one. I just feel like based on our enrollment numbers and what the average salary is for this district, which is one fifty-two, that a hundred and ninety thousand just seems really high. There were a lot of, I felt like there was a lot of backlash over Dr. Lawson's salary. So I think we may be about maybe ten thousand, a little more than I would expect, but I'm one of nine people, so I understand that. This is my opinion.
Mr., are you done?
I am, I'm doing, thank you.
Uh, I was gonna suggest somewhere in the one fifty, fifty-five or sixty range. I concur with what, uh, Mr. Coon and all of you say.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I have to agree. I'd be a lot more comfortable in that range than I am going up this high. That's just, and plus the ten thousand proposed bonuses. You know, um, I just feel like, and then we also had talked about helping them move if they were out of county or out of state. And that's another thing, so I, I'm just not comfortable in this range.
I do think whatever the salary is, that we need to make it known that that salary will not change under the contract. That there, that that's a set salary and that's that, that is what they'll be making. Is it, and I think all of us kind of maybe agree to that, that there will not be any raises for three years. So whatever we set now, unless we, and, and my thinking is, maybe I'm always looking at pie in the sky, but we've got to be competitive and, uh, we've got, you know, all these schools. And, uh, we're the largest school district in the county and we're still less than, than Tallahoma. And, uh, you know, it's just something to think about in the future because I, we've got our teacher's salaries competitive now, which is good. But, you know, understand where you're coming from. You can get, you can get out of raising.
Mr. Chairman, would you please repeat the motion again? Is it just?
The, the motion is to approve a salary range for the director of a hundred and seventy-five to a hundred and eighty-five thousand, um, dollars with a annual performance bonus of ten thousand, um, in twenty-five hundred dollar increments for each performance goal the director achieves.
Ms. Chair, so if you left the motion as that, that could basically be looked at as a bargaining tool for a price range instead of setting the price. Otherwise, we're gonna need an amendment and set a price right now. That's our two options, the way I see it.
Well, we can.
You leave a doorway opening between those two ranges if this passes.
Right.
And we negotiate that out in a contract when we, hey, have a pick, or we're gonna have to amend this right now and make a, set a number.
Or we can withdraw the motion and make a new motion, so.
We're, on, on our time essence, of an essence right now is, you know, getting this set forth that, you know, we need to, if we do, I'll, I'll take my, my motion, uh, because we need to make, you know, we need to get this taken care of so that we can, we're about to start doing interviews and, uh, we need to be able to tell them what, what they're gonna be making. That's a very important piece of information right here. So, uh, you know, because we, we are, we're, we're gonna, I, I understand what Ms. Jones is saying as well and, you know, we've got Mr. Parsley in the, on the audience with us and me and him are on the industrial board as well and, uh, it's coming. I mean, we're gonna grow. And, uh, so, you know, we need to take that into consideration before, you know, while we're doing this as well, so, you know, just an, an idea. You know, in three years, we're gonna be, you know, we've got people that are trying to build houses now and we're in a farm fight as well too, so it's, uh, we've got a lot, lot to think about right here, right this, right this second, I guess is what I'm trying to say, so. But I do agree with everybody as well. If we look at where we're at now, everybody has a, a point.
Ms. Chair, did, did he, did Mr. Hansert withdraw his motion on the floor?
Well, I think, uh, Ms. Jones has a motion.
I want to mention something else. Uh, what is the salary now? One forty-five?
Well, that's a good question.
I guess what we need, we need to look at it this way. For twenty to thirty thousand a year out of the big budget that we have for all of Coffey County, that's not a lot in, in looking for the, the best applicant. And, uh, I'm just, I, I hate for us to be the, the, on, low on the totem pole in our own county.
Right.
And, uh, and we're gonna expect a lot out of this person. And, uh, that person is going to, uh, hopefully attain what we come up with, that's goals for our system. And will be, you know, uh, worth it, but, um, so once we set this, and it, it would be for three years. And, and like you say, I understand with that ten thousand, that possible ten thousand extra would add to it.
That would be a benefit if, if certain things are met.
You know. So, no, I'll, I'll withdraw my motion and, you know, on the, because we do need, need to be more specific, I'd say, in what was.
Ms. Chair, I move that we set the director's salary for Coffey County Schools at one hundred and eighty thousand dollars with a potential of a ten thousand dollar bonus at the end of the, each year, analyze through the, the four discussed avenues.
Okay, wait a minute, are you withdrawing your motion then?
Yes.
All right, so.
Yes, she did. She, she said I withdraw my motion and then I moved.
Okay, and you're moving to set the salary at a hundred and eighty thousand with, with, um, a ten thousand dollar bonus in twenty-five hundred dollar increments.
Exactly, yes, sir.
Does that include the six thousand travel?
That's, if I'm not mistaken, I think the, I think the six thousand travel is part of law anyways. Is that not something that is required to offer to it? It's not, okay. So yes, that would include that.
So one eighty including the six thousand.
Yeah, it's in the con, it's in the contract that everybody approved anyways.
So what would base salary be?
One eighty.
Plus the six thousand additional?
Yes.
Okay.
And I think the board needs to understand too, because I didn't understand it until I was on that committee for sure. That six thousand dollars is for in-county and surrounding county travel.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
So.
And I, I think you had a good question earlier, Ms. Matthews, about if requisition forms or anything was, has to be turned in with that claim. I think that would be an answer for this side of the room.
What?
No.
I, I, I didn't hear you.
I think on the, the question of if you just get the six thousand dollars or if you have to turn in proof of mileage and things of that nature, I think you still have to turn in all that stuff.
I don't think you do.
No.
You don't?
Yeah.
No.
No, it's just a flat six thousand each. Yeah.
It's not actual spending.
We should.
So that, so that person, if that was not in there, the person would be required to submit a travel log of every month, weekly, whatever, to, um, accounts payable. Rather, right now, it's just ran through their payroll. Well, as.
I think we should require that.
Yeah, so actually, right now, that would just be a salary increase, you must say. I mean, because it's just added to the salary automatically. Is that correct?
It is already, because that's how it was written in the previous contract.
I think it's written certainly in most of the contracts we looked at, um, when we were drafting up the draft contract, although some, a few pay actual mileage.
Well, I know it was discussed in the director's committee that that is a little bit high for travel within
I would be willing to back that amount.
The county.
I would be willing to back that amount out of my motion.
And just do away with it totally?
The, well, we could. I mean, that could be, that could be an amendment. I could back it out and then just simply say that we'll strike that clause from the contract.
Just do away with the, the travel, the six thousand dollar travel?
Yeah.
And, and do you go to actual mileage then?
No, there wouldn't be none. There would be a salary plus a, uh, there'd be a salary plus an opportunity of a ten thousand dollar performance bonus is broken into twenty-five hundred dollar increments.
Mr. Chair, may I inject another concern here? A lot of, a lot of contracts have a base, uh, base car allowance, say, of five thousand dollars. That includes any travel inside the system or any travel one county out of the system. If you go two counties out, then you get your mileage based on whatever the state mileage chart is, so that could vary from time to time. So that might complicate it more, Robert. You know, you've got a, you've got a, a car allowance is what they call it. And that would be whatever number you want to come up with. And then that would be in-system travel, one county out travel, just to let across the board. And then if you went out of, out of those county areas, then you'd get seventy cents a mile like everyone else is or whatever the state rate is at that time.
I think that's, well, I think that's what we're talking about doing is backing that and covering that in the base salary. Just color, covering this county and the surrounding county. But obviously, if they go outside of that range, they're gonna fall in. I think we have policy that dictates what we get.
That's correct.
As an administrator or supervisor or whatever, anytime they have to go outside of that range.
Right.
Well, it, I think the contract, it would, that would be just for director only. The supervisors and administrators get mileage regardless of where they're going. They just get a set rate.
You either need the representation of policy in the contract or you need this vehicle allowance in the contract.
You can do either one.
One or the other, yeah.
You can do the one.
Thank you. It's my thinking that it should be less than six thousand, because I've talked with, uh, some administrators that do travel from county, from school to school because it's not that much, it's not, it doesn't amount to six thousand a year, you know, what. But when you look at the counties surrounding Coffey County, most of the meetings are not in that county anyway. They're, they're on other, they're in Davidson County or Columbia or outside the surrounding county, so that, that, they're gonna get compensated for that for any, any of those meetings anyway. But I hate not to give some type of travel allowance because it is wear and tear on your vehicle. And I guess Dr. Powell can, can assert to, to the times you're, you're in and out of your vehicle.
It would be, if you take, what you had, what'd you say, six thousand for travel? All right, that would be total travel period. Would that just be in-system travel and one county out? Is that what that would mean? You know, you take that six thousand, you take the six thousand, Robert, and divide that by twelve.
I think that's what it says in the, uh.
That's how much a month? Five hundred, yeah.
Correct me if I'm wrong, April.
Yeah, that's five hun, five hundred a month.
Not to exceed six thousand a year. That's what the contract states.
He said eighty-five hundred miles a year.
Six, all right. If you, if you take the six thousand, divide that by twelve, you get a flat five hundred dollar a month travel allowance in the system and one county or, yeah, in the system and one county out, you'd get the five hundred dollars a month. Anything above that, they would get a regular allowance of seventy cents a mile or whatever the state mileage is at that time.
Yes, it says that in the contract. Additional mileage and expenses shall be paid for travel required by the director during the performance of official duties that extend beyond one county outside of the Coffey County at a rate established for the school employees with property reimbursement claims submitted.
Correct, but five hundred dollars a month travel, um.
That'd be one, every trip to Nashville, correct?
Trip to Nashville is a hundred and forty miles.
Which is, uh, two counties over, I guess.
But that wouldn't, but, but they'd be paid additional to the county, to the Nashville meeting.
That would be additional, right. And there, a lot of this involves Nashville.
And what do our supervisors currently get in the way?
They get a straight seventy cents a mile regardless of whether it's to the high school or to Deerfield or to Nashville or wherever it may be.
That number is.
They don't get a set rate.
That number is set by the state as a recommendation.
Yeah, we go by the state contract.
Yeah, so we update that, we look at that every year and it gets updated every January.
Yeah. Presently, it's seventy cents a mile.
Could I?
I know that might complicate it, so I'm gonna fill in blanks here.
Kind of, Dr. Taylor, a motion on the floor, but go ahead.
Ms. Osmo, approximately, what do you, I know you would travel a lot between schools. Uh, but what's the average of what you'd get within the county and the surrounding counties?
Well, myself and Dr. Cornelis and a few others, you know, we do quite a bit of travel in the district. And as, you know, if, if my travel is much over a hundred dollars, a hundred and twenty dollars per month, then I start really thinking I've spent too much money. Now, my last travel check for last month was two hundred and twenty-eight dollars, but I'll tell you why. I had a trip to Wilson County for a training. So that was out of district and, you know, when you're talking a hundred and thirty, a hundred and forty miles round trip, it adds up pretty quick. Now, as far as for a director, that's gonna be a different world because, uh, I know the director has a lot of events, you know, for the South Central, Nashville, Henry Horton a lot. I mean, the director's in and out of the district quite a bit for mileage. But as far as an average for the supervisors, I know my average would probably be a hundred dollars per month for travel.
It would, correct me now, April, if I'm wrong. It would be, you'd have to do a whole lot of traveling in the system and within surrounding counties to come up with five hundred dollars a year for my, I mean, a month for mileage. So basically, that's just, that's just a pay increase of six thousand dollars. Is that correct, April?
That's correct.
Okay.
So if we went with something that, that.
While we're in debate, are we in debate?
Not really, but.
Did you, well, did you get a second?
We need to have a motion, but we need to, we've kind of got off salary and onto travel expenses, but.
Because if we can, in discussion, if we can come up with things, things, I would be willing to withdraw my motion, restate it, kind of accommodating some of the points.
Well, you never got a second in your motion, so.
I'll second, I'll second the motion while we can discuss, I second.
Okay, so Frida has seconded the motion. We can discuss. My feeling is, is, you know, paying the mileage rate, you know, is, is probably a more equitable way to do it because it's for actual mileage, you know, and that seventy cents takes into account gas plus wear and tear on vehicles and in theory, it should cover most of your travel expenses.
But I would hate to see a director have to log in and all that in the, in the county, you know, because they, it, sometimes, sometimes it's, uh, immediate that they have to leave and all this and, and maybe we could just come up with a, an amount per month that's not as exorbitant as six thousand a year. That's just my thinking, because I, you know.
Chairman.
I know as a supervisor, it was, it was hard to make sure I signed in, signed back in and I had my, you know, had everything like it should be. If you go to New Union or, or North Coffee or whatever, and I don't think a director should have that, that on them. That's just my thinking.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
The, the five, if you go to five hundred dollars a month, that isn't, that's not accountable for, is it, April?
What do you mean?
If, 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 if I'm getting a flat five hundred dollars a month, which I'm not, uh, getting a flat five hundred dollars a month, then any travel within the system and within a one county area, I don't have to turn that in as mileage.
That's correct, so you don't turn in a form.
Right, so anything outside of that, you have to turn a form in like everyone else for your mileage reimbursement.
So you're not reimbursed for in-county?
No.
Okay.
Oh, I am because I'm not under their direction right now.
Okay.
He's turning in a travel, so he's logging his travel each month.
I have to turn all mine in at this point in time, but due to my situation. But normally, that, whatever you figure set, that five hundred dollars a month or whatever, you really don't have to account for that anywhere. If you don't go anywhere, you still get the five hundred dollars a month. Of course, you're gonna go, you're gonna be going within from school to school hopefully and, um, you're gonna be going to. You're gonna be going to, you know, we have a, a good, very good core superintendent's study council now. And each month, we go to somewhere or wherever it might be. It may be Telahoma, it may be, uh, Chebbyville. It may be, if we go to those, don't go to Telahoma, you're okay. If you go outside the Bedford County, Fayetteville, no forth, you, that's additional money that you would turn in as a travel expense as opposed just to the flatter rate, flat rate of the month. I know that complicates it, but.
No. Well, I think what we're saying is the counties that surround us, Bedford, Franklin, Grundy, uh, Cannon, Warren.
You wouldn't, you wouldn't have to count for that travel.
Count for that, but, right.
Be in your salary is what it amounts to.
And then anything outside, the director would get additional mileage, same as everybody else.
Is that correct, April?
Yes. So it seems to me we need to just come up with an amount for in, in, you know, that travel within.
Well, if you went with what Charlie said, if you came up with two hundred and fifty bucks, that sounds like it'd more than cover.
Right.
In-county travel.
Right.
Adjacent, so. Okay. Do you want to withdraw your motion and restate?
I gotta think how to restate.
Can I, can I bring up a point? I would feel more comfortable if we were in the one-seventy range. And then even if we had to go to five thousand for travel expenses, that brings it up to the one-seventy-five, which was the lowest range that y'all put in here. And then to me, the ten thousand brings it up to the one-eighty-five, but he's gotta earn it. So that's the difference for me. Um, so that's about the range that I would be more comfortable in.
So the question also is if you offer a higher range, are you gonna get, I mean, right now, we have eleven candidates. So, and with no stated salary range, the applications close this Friday. Although I guess we could vote to extend that, but I probably wouldn't advise that. But by coming up with a, are, are you eliminating candidates or getting people not to apply because you don't have a stated salary range or, or you're not in the range where, what they're expecting?
Trying to attract.
Trying to attract, yes.
But Tom, are we trying to attract anymore since it cuts off on Friday?
Yeah, I mean.
Unless we choose to extend it, we're, we're not trying to attract anyone.
I would think that this might attract some last minute people to go, now wait a minute.
Right, you know, range before then.
I would like to hope so anyways.
Can, can I just point out that on, on this list of counties in this South Central District, with the exception of Telahoma at one-ninety-two, um, Maury County is three times our size and they have, their salary is a hundred and seventy thousand. But everyone else on this list looks like they're between, you know, a hundred and twenty-ish to one-fifty-ish. So I guess I'm just wondering why, you know, why one-fifty-ish or one-sixty wouldn't be the sweet spot, um, for this South Central District? Because that's where everyone else is except for just maybe two or three. Lincoln County looks pretty high. Uh, I think they just had a higher. So I'm just, I'm, I'm really with Beth on, and Mr. Coon on this. I just feel like one-eighty plus everything else is, I mean, you're getting up, I mean, I'm just thinking, you know, like, where do you go from there when you're already that high? I just really think we need to reconsider.
Well, just, just, just a reminder that, um.
Mr. Chair, one more comment if I might.
Where, there's eleven school districts out there throughout the state that are looking for candidates. So we're not just looking at South Central region salaries, but we're competing against the entire state. So if that changes anything, I don't know, Mr. Coon, has, has, is Mr. Statistics down there for us? So I'm asking you, does that change anything?
Well, you're, um, you know, as far as what districts are looking, I don't, you know, I don't know. I didn't.
Yeah, I don't.
I don't run, run, run those numbers, but, you know, when you start getting up to two hundred thousand a year for director salary, with the exception of one, uh, city, um, district, I believe that was Oak Ridge, um, you know, you're talking about very large school systems, uh, you know, you're talking about twenty thousand plus students and, you know, anywhere twenty to twenty-five schools. You, you know, and that's in the two hundred thousand dollar a year range.
So what is the number, what are the salary numbers come out again for school systems our size?
Our size, well, you know, we're, I think on, on ours, it was listed with a little over forty-one hundred students. So I went with the four thousand to five thousand student enrollment. And the average of all the schools in the state that fall within that category comes up to a hundred and fifty-two, two-seventy-seven. You know, personally myself, I think, you know, I think we need to have a bargaining range. You know, ideally, I think, I think it ought to be somewhere between one-fifty-five and one-sixty-five. And, you know, with the bonus and, you know, travel expense and, and whatnot, I mean, I think that's a very fair offer to somebody to come into a district that's our size.
Mr. Chair, I think in your contract, also, I believe you have in there that whatever percent of increase you give your employees, that director gets that same percent increase on his or her salary.
I don't think that's in the new contract, is it?
Man, I, I thought it was, Robert.
No, we certainly got away from that after the last.
Okay, may not be.
I thought we took that out, but I could be wrong.
Stand corrected if I'm not, if it's not in there. I haven't looked at it that closely last time.
Isn't that, what is the city school salary now?
One-forty-five.
Does, is there a, uh, is there a, uh, travel bonus?
There's a travel allowance and I wanna think it's three or five thousand dollars. I'm not sure, Frida, I'd have to check back and see.
So one fifty and one ninety is on each side of it.
That if, if the system gets a three, five, seven percent pay increase,
That thirty-two.
Same percent increase goes to the director of schools.
And I think we stripped that from our contract, that opportunity. We're strictly holding this to a salary and.
If it was that high, yeah.
With a set, set number.
We have, what, nine, let's see, we've got six elementary, middle, Raider Academy, high school, and then, uh, cost.
And Virtual Academy.
Virtual Academy too. So there's a lot of, a lot of difference in that. So I certainly think we need to take that into consideration because a person, you know, a person coming in here will look at all three systems and think, oh, my gosh, I'm not gonna take that on when the next, the next district over is making that for just three schools.
Yeah, I believe we pulled that out, out of the, out of the contract. I'm not seeing it in here, so. What's that? Yeah, there's a moving allowance.
But those are just, but those are just one-time.
Right.
Yeah.
Hay out, so it's not yearly.
Well, right now, we have a motion on the floor by Mr. Gilly and seconded by, uh.
I think it was, uh, yeah. I would like to, I would like to withdraw that motion.
Okay, that motion is withdrawn?
And then I would like to move to, I, I'm, I'm all about this. If it fails, it fails. It don't, it don't. A hundred and seventy-five thousand with a five thousand cap on an annual travel allowance and still allow the opportunity for up to ten thousand annually based off of performance broke into four twenty-five hundred increments.
So, um, a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars with a, uh, what?
Five thousand annually allowance for travel.
Five thousand annual travel allowance and.
The ten thousand in four increments.
Up to ten thousand in four increments.
Performance-based goals.
Four performance-based goals of twenty-five hundred each, okay. So, do we have a second on that?
I'll second it where I can ask you a question. On that five thousand cap for travel, is, is, you're saying they're not gonna get any more than five thousand for everything? Or just in, in counties?
Do what now, the five thousand? No, the five thousand would be like the contract says with the, uh, around town and, and, uh, county's surrounding.
Okay. I thought we were reducing that some. You reduce, you reduce it a little?
Well, I threw it just a little bit more. There's always room for an amendment, I guess.
Well, there's, uh, right now, it's six thousand and so he's knocking it down to five thousand, I think is, for in-county travel.
I've done all I'm gonna do besides vote, so y'all can amend or whatever. It's, you know the rules.
All right. So right now, the motion that is on the floor is, uh, to, uh, establish a director's salary of a hundred and seventy-five thousand with five thousand in in-county travel expenses and a performance bonus of ten thousand dollars to be divided into twenty-five hundred dollar increments for each performance goal the director achieves. Is that correct, Mr. Gilly?
Yes, sir.
And that was seconded by Ms. Jones. Further discussion?
Is that ten thousand dollar bonus each year for the performance goals that we come up, up to that, yes. It could be zero.
Right.
But if it is, that's not good.
It's performance-based, yes.
Yeah, before this three-year contract's out, we need to be thinking about.
Before, it should, it should have met all four goals by the end of the contract, for sure.
That'd be nice. That'd be real nice.
Or by the end of the year, yeah.
Or, or by the end of the contract, yeah. So that's not part of it, just possible.
All right.
No, that didn't, and my, my motion didn't include any of that because we stripped that out of the contract.
Now, the board can elect to give the director a bonus or, or a one-time if, if we so choose.
Outside of contract, but it would take a board vote to do that.
Right, exactly. Any further discussion? All right, um, let us vote on this, Ms. Matthews.
No.
Mr. Coon?
No.
Mr. Gilly?
Yes.
Mr. Cordell?
No.
Ms. Yench?
I'm gonna say no.
Mr. Hensher?
No.
Ms. Jones?
Aye.
Ms. Hodge?
No.
And I will vote aye. That is, one, two, three, four, five nays and four, let me just count that, two, three, no, we got one, two, three.
Six, sorry.
Four, five, six, six nays and three ayes. So that motion fails.
So now you gotta entertain the way they wanna go.
We do need to entertain a motion because we really need to get this established. So we need to entertain a motion, um, for director's salary.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we, um, have a set salary of a hundred and sixty-five thousand. We cut the travel down to twenty-five hundred, um, and make that inside the county to cover inside the county. Anything outside the county would be done on a travel report. And that would make it a hundred and sixty-seven-five guaranteed. And then add the performance bonuses.
So you're talking a hundred and fifty-five thousand?
Of what?
A hundred and fifty-five thousand salary?
No, one-sixty-five.
One-sixty-five.
Yes. And then, of course, add the performance bonuses if the conditions are met.
Good. Do we have a second for Mr. Coon's motion?
I'll second that.
I'll second that.
Okay, Mr. Coon and Ms. Hodge. All right. Any discussion on that? Okay, let us vote. Mr. Coon?
Let me ask one question. When you said in-county with that twenty-five hundred dollars, do you not mean the surrounding counties also?
No, no, because the, the surrounding, if they're gonna travel outside of the surrounding counties, they're gonna know ahead of time, they can fill out a, a travel.
So it's just in-county?
Just in-county. They've covered their day-to-day travel inside the county from school to school.
And realistically, like, you know, nobody's, you know, the director's not going down to Grundy County very, very often.
Right.
So, okay. Any further discussion? Mr. Coon, you're first up. Mr. Gilly?
No.
Uh, Mr. Cordell?
Aye.
Ms. Yench?
Aye.
Mr. Hensher?
Aye.
Ms. Jones?
No.
Ms. Hodge?
Aye.
And Ms. Matthews?
Aye.
And I will vote, um, no. So we have one, two, three, four, five, six yays and three nays. So the motion passes to, um, use a director's salary of a hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars per year plus twenty-five hundred dollar inside-the-county travel allowance plus the performance bonuses of, um, uh, up to ten thousand dollars to be divided into twenty-five hundred dollar increments for each performance goal the director achieves. That passes six to three. Did you get that? Okay. All right. Our next agenda item is the wool lighting. And that is you, Mr. Shores, right?
Yes. Hey, uh, the, we started looking at the musco lighting and since we're having to put this out for bid, we need to, uh, get, uh, engineered drawings for the lighting process so that we can put those out to bid. Uh, Wool provided two proposals, uh, here. One is to, uh, to, to look at each one of the fields, look and see what the lighting, uh, situation is, the hardware, uh, what is there, what, what the lights are, uh, the strength of the lights. And basically what that is to do is give, it would give the board, let, let's say that it was a decision we couldn't afford to, uh, light all the fields and put musco lighting on all of them. This would be a way to say these are the ones that are in the most need. Uh, but that, that's, that's one part of it. The second part is actually doing the drawings that they would provide, uh, to me to be able to put out to, uh, to bid. And, and then the, the contractors could actually bid off that, uh, that information that, that's put out. Uh, there is another part to this that if, uh, we, if, if it was wanted is that they could take care of the bidding in the construction phase, which I myself don't see a reason for them to do so. We could bid it ourselves. We can oversee, or I can oversee the, the actual installation of the lighting process. So I, I don't see a reason for that, but, but it kinda gives you an idea. It's, it's not a cheap thing by no means. For them to do the study, uh, they, they would do it for fifteen thousand for the lump sum uh, or five thousand dollars for each site. So we're, we're looking at three different sites. We're looking at the middle school. We're looking at the Raider Academy. We're also looking at the high school. So of course, five thousand for each one of those sites would be the fifteen thousand for the, uh, total lump sum. Uh, for, uh, and they would actually do the, the breakdown as well if you wanna look at specific fields. And they, they actually put that in here as well. For the actual drawings, uh, it, 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 it breaks it down and a total for all of them is a forty-two thousand. And then if you wa- want them to do the bidding in the construction phase, that's twenty-eight thousand. And if there's any questions, I'd be glad to, to answer any questions that might come up after motion in a second.
Okay, we need a motion to approve the, uh, old bid for the, uh, lighting design. Do I have a, a motion?
So, Tom, exactly what are we, I mean, there's a lot of figures.
So Tom, exactly what are we, I mean, there's a lot of figures on this. Exactly which ones are we approving?
Okay, you, you can, it really depends on which motion you, you want to go with. If, if you wanna include a study of the fields with the lights, then you would include that. If you wanna include just the, uh, providing the drawings, then you would do that as your motion. If you wanna do both of them, you'd include both of those in your motion. Then you have the third one, if you wanna include it into it, which is the overseeing, then that would be including that into the motion. So it could be one, two, or three different items. And, and it, it's just really which one the board feels we need. Uh, I, I can, I can give you my recommendation of what I think you need or we need. In my opinion, we just need the drawings, but if the board is thinking, well, we might not have enough money to do everything, well, you might wanna go with the, uh, the study as well, which, which is fairly expensive.
Yeah, and I think that's what she was asking is trying to, so we could properly formulate the motion, so.
Does that answer, Ms. Yench?
And Dr. Powell, that's, that's kinda your recommendation too, is?
To that extent, yes.
To go for the study?
I don't know that. As far as the, the study's concerned, or the oversight, is that the two things we're looking at?
Okay, the, the first is the, no, there's three things. The first is they study to say, hey, the lights at the, the football field are this good shape or they need to be changed out or whatnot. Uh, or the ones at the, the baseball field are, are needing it because of this. In, in my opinion, we could look at it and pretty much tell which ones are in the worst condition. And that would save us twenty-five thousand dollars.
See, that was my question. At some point in time, someone has decided this is what we need, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
We're gonna have to have a motion on the floor with a second to open debate.
I don't have a, gonna make a motion because I really don't understand it.
It is, it is a mo, can I, can I make a motion that I think will answer that?
Yes, please do.
I move that we accept this, uh, estimate for the lighting analysis for Coffey County schools from Wold Engineering.
That's the fifteen thousand for the entire?
For the entire package. I mean.
Okay, that, that would be.
We got a motion, we can pass or not pass, but we got a motion on the floor, we need a second, then we can open debate.
Which number is that? That, that you're, is it the forty-two thousand?
Yes, at the end.
Okay.
And that's just for a study?
We need a second to my motion before we start discussing.
It was just a question.
Well, then we can go to discussion, so.
Yeah.
So Gillie, Mr. Gillie made a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second it so we can discuss.
Ms. Yench seconds, okay, now we can go to discussion.
Alright, I do believe that this is going to be required anyways. The plans, specs, and drawings are gonna have to be required for us to do this anyways, correct?
That's the one thing we have to have is the drawings to be able to put out for bid. We do not have to have a study of how good the lights are and the equipment that is there. We, we, we don't have to have that. We don't have to have them doing the, the bidding it out. But we have to have the drawings for us to put, put out for bid.
Well, besides just bids, you won't have to have the plan and intentions and certifications.
It, it's gonna have all that part in it, yes.
Yeah, but you've gotta have that for other avenues other than just bidding. You gotta keep that on file to know, to make sure you're within code of electrical current and usage and all that good stuff.
And that's what the forty-two thousand, that they are providing the full drawings for every field to be able to go out and, and be able to collect back in that is required.
Yeah, that's.
What is required.
That's what I'm saying, that the forty-two thousand is required for us to do this project anyway.
Correct.
So there's fifteen thousand to assess the current lighting, there's forty-two thousand to do the plans, and then the, the twenty-eight thousand is for bid support, right?
Basically, they, they run it, yes.
Yeah, yeah, okay, so, so there's three separate things really, what's that?
Forty-two plus twenty-eight plus?
Fifteen.
Eighty-five thousand dollars.
Yeah.
To just engineer the lighting.
If they did, if, and, and there's even parts of it you don't, still don't even need.
You still don't even need. But, but the engineering part of it as far as.
Is the forty-two thousand.
Requirements of electricity, what we're gonna need and all that, we're gonna have to have that for codes and everything else.
No matter what.
No matter what.
So this doesn't include the actual lights?
No, ma'am.
No.
What, what does that cost?
We've not put it out for bid yet.
Well.
I mean.
We've got budgetary, you've got, yeah.
Well, the same company does the lights.
They gave us around about price for it before, didn't they give you?
We, we have pricing for the lights. We have pricing for the materials. We can buy that through Sourcewell, so that's, that's a cooperative purchasing. We can buy those without any problems. Basically, what we're needing is to be able to, to bid out the labor of installation. And the board would have to still approve the lights. And, and you'd still have to approve.
Well, so what happens if we approve this? And then we don't, we don't approve the lights?
And you just wasted forty-two thousand dollars.
Exactly.
Well, I wouldn't say that. You always have it sitting there.
Yeah.
You always have the drawings ready for it to, to go out.
Did we ever decide if we didn't, didn't vote to do the lights, to, to pursue the bids for the lights? Did we ever decide that?
We have one, we have one point five million set aside to go towards the lights if the board continues to move forward with this. Correct.
Yeah, that's on that capital project sheet we discussed at the work session, so.
So, um, I'm curious, have we heard from our coaches? Like, is this, are the coaches wanting the lights?
I haven't seen the ones that I came in and brought my own personal equipment out and changed the bulbs for them last week. Although I thank Mr. Kelvin for pulling me out of the mud.
I, I just haven't heard a lot about it.
Okay, we, we have a coach here, we also have ADs here, uh, and, and talking to them, this is a direction that we felt like is needed.
Okay.
Mr. Shores, is, is this a good price for this, in your opinion?
Ms., Ms. Hodge, I, I, I don't deal this high up with, uh, we, we normally don't.
You have no idea.
I really don't know. Um, I, 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 I've gotta take, since we are using Wold as our engineering contractor, I, I, I've gotta take what they have given me, and they're the ones I've worked through. So I, I really couldn't tell you if this is a good price on that part or not. I didn't check with any other engineering contractors.
Cause in my head, who obviously knows nothing about this, that seems crazy, but.
It's a lot of money.
I don't know anything about this.
I do know that architectural drawing.
From the construction side of it, your drawings for each field, you're probably, you know, you're probably looking at twenty-five hundred dollars. You know, if you went out and hired somebody to do those drawings and that doesn't include the other stuff too, so. So those numbers are not, the, the four thousand for the, the, you know, baseball field at the middle school, that's not real far out of, I, I mean, that's not, I think that's a, a fair price.
Okay, thank you, that's what I needed to hear.
Sorry, I couldn't ask better.
No, you're fine. This, this was hard. This was a confusing one. And there's a lot of numbers on here.
Well, the motion on the floor, just as a reminder, is to, um, is for the forty-two hundred, forty-two thousand dollars, right, Mr. Gillie? Is that correct?
Yeah.
So.
Forty-two thousand only?
Yes.
No, it was the forty-two.
Forty-two thousand is what he said.
And we have to do this no matter what.
We, we had to do.
We have to have a plan.
Forty-two thousand, if we do the lights, we'll have to be done, yes.
And I do know architectural drawings are, they're out the roof when you go paying for them, for even a house.
See, I don't know anything about this. Mr. Chairman, my recommendation would be to pay the forty-two thousand for the plans. Talking with Mr. Shores, I think the valuation's been done, we should pretty well know what we need. And we can put bids out as well as they can for twenty-eight thousand dollars.
Okay, which is what the motion is. Alright, any further discussion?
Now, did you say that there was a million and a half set apart for the lighting already? So that's.
And we'll let Ms. Milton talk to them.
Yeah, it's been going for two years.
Yeah.
Yeah, so that was restricted in last year's budget. There was a budget amendment that was done, I guess, I think maybe May of last school year. So that one point five million dollars rolled into the restricted capital fund balance. And that will have to be pulled out in a budget amendment if you guys choose to do this, to be able to use that one point five million. So it's not currently in the budget, it's sitting in, um, restricted fund balance right now. So if y'all choose to do this, I'll have to do a budget amendment to move that out.
Now, it's restricted fund balance, can we use it for anything else other than the lights, or is that it? It has to go for lights?
So the, it was restricted for lighting, but the board can elect to do whatever they choose with fund balance. So I can't, it was, the original motion for that one point five million dollars was for lighting. But as far as using it for other purposes, that's solely up to the board.
Okay.
Further discussion? Okay. Will you vote on the, uh, the motion?
Mr. Chairman, excuse me. Ms. Shores?
Yes, sir.
Have we done any type of study yet to assess the need for the lighting and the condition of, you know, the fifteen thousand? Have we already done some study on that? Or should we look at first spending the fifteen thousand to assess the condition of the lighting before we? Are we getting the cart before the horse?
Okay, in, in a lot of cases, I would agree with what you're saying. Uh, Mr. Gillie alluded to something a little earlier that is completely correct. We had to get a crane out there to, at the baseball field to change out approximately nine lights, uh, recently. Um, it's a constant problem. Uh, it's a problem at the high, at the Raider Academy with the football lighting, uh, lights going out. Uh, at, at baseball and softball, there's wooden poles, which is, uh, another problem that you run into. You run into old conduit. Uh, so there's, there's problems that we already know are there. And, and it, give you an example, at, at middle school, they don't even have lights for the soccer field. There, there's not lights. So this is completely putting in new everything. So we have an idea what's out, I mean, we, you could just go out and see what's there. That's the reason why I don't know that we need a study in the sense. Uh, now, if everything was fairly new and really good shape, it might be a little bit different, but it, it's, it's a different type setup. If that helps any.
Yes, thank you.
Further questions? Alright, we are voting on the forty-two thousand dollars for the, for the light, uh, plans. None of the other two items here, so just the forty-two thousand. So, Mr. Gillie?
Aye.
Uh, Mr. Cordell?
Ah.
Ms. Yench?
Aye.
Mr. Henser?
Aye.
Ms. Jones?
Aye.
Ms. Hodge?
Aye.
Ms. Matthews?
Aye.
Mr. Coon?
Ah.
And I'll vote aye, that passes, uh, nine to zero. Okay, we are on to the athletic director job description. That is item six on the, no, that's item five on the agenda. And, do we have that in? Uh, I thought I had it, saw it in here somewhere. It should be in your packet. Yeah, there it is, I'm sorry. This was submitted by Mr. Gillie. And I should note, this is for, to approve a job description only. We're not voting on funding at this part, point, so this is just for the job description. The, the funding will have to be worked out later, uh, but, but this is to approve the, the athletic doc, director job position. So, do I have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make that motion.
To, to approve?
To approve. As stated or posted, the job description of athletic, system-wide athletic director.
Okay, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Ms. Hodge seconds? Okay, discussion?
Now, as I understand it, if we vote this in tonight, it could be just like when we voted in on the daycare job description, that we may never use it? But we possibly could in the future if we wanted to, right? So this is not saying we are going to hire this position.
That is correct, yes.
Okay.
This is for the job description only. So if you're going to fund the position, then we're gonna have to do that as a separate action by the board.
Totally other day.
And if we ever funded this position, then we would have the option of deciding if, if, how we would reallocate the, the, uh, supplements that are given to the two ADs now. I mean, that could be, that would have to be looked at because, in my opinion, but anyway, this is just the job, job description.
This is just the, the job description for a system-wide athletic director here. It's got nothing to do with athletic directors at other schools or none of that at this time. That could come up, that could come up in discussions when we're talking about budgeting and funding.
Right, right. That's what I wanted to clear up.
And so if we, Ms. Milton, if we, uh, if we decided we wanted to fund this, we'd have to look at supplements and we'd have to look at salaries and things like that at another board meeting?
Well, currently, I think the two ADs that we have right now at the high school, they split a supplement because they change seasons. And then middle school, there's one person who receives that supplement. Um, and, but I guess my understanding was this was an entire new, new position that would be supported by salary and not a supplement? It's just, it's the option of the boards. That's currently how ADs are set, is we give them a supplement and it's spread across their pay.
Yeah, this is merely the description, this is merely the description if we ever chose to use that position here administratively. And of course, once you do that, you've gotta approve the funding, we've gotta come up with the funding, we gotta figure out how we're gonna do it, all that good stuff.
Robert, did you work with HR getting this job description together here? No?
No.
Who, who did you work with getting the job description together?
Uh, let's see here, Williamson County, uh, uh, DeKalb County, uh, Cumberland County, and, uh, I'm trying to think of it, Mylan.
Okay.
And I think Mr. Henser had some opportunities of people he had reached out as well. And, uh, I had some help typing it, yeah, I'm not a good one-finger typer.
I, I haven't looked in detail, but does it include any type of training for coaches? Uh, or this person, um, um, seeing, overseeing training for coaches?
Yes, this, if you scroll down and last minute when I come in, I had a great conversation with, uh, Mr. John Olive in Tallahhoma.
Yes.
And, uh, there is a recommendation on the required certifications that obviously, this gets the job description established. When we start talking about funding this, obviously, there's probably gonna be many avenues and many things on this in which we wanna change, cause coming in, I had three that I wanted to state into the motion. One is, uh, just like you're talking about, that the applicant under must require and possess current NIA triple-A certification as an athletic administrator. Uh, that was recommended last minute before I come in by Mr. Olive. There, there's a couple more duties that's not stated in here that I think should have been in there. Basically, all, obviously, attending every board meeting.
Yes.
Official board meeting.
And that's not included?
Because we need a report from this person every time.
But that's not included in this job description we're looking at today?
Not this one right here. Now, we can amend it, and I would allow amend, cause I did write these down before I come in. But either which way, I'm not gonna lose my paper. If we get to the point that we're talking about funding, we can always interject those changes to the description when we're talking about the funding as well, if we wanted to.
And we could also amend it to just assistant coach, or assistant principals too, if we wanted to do that.
Well, if you, you start getting into the funding and, and how we're gonna fund it and it requires an angle that we're probably pulling some funding from school levels, I guess that would have to be noted in it, but I don't, and, and that's. But I don't, and, and that's one thing I've been a strong advocate about. I don't, I don't see this as a cut, maybe a realignment. You're still gonna have to have building level help if you were in this position. You're still gonna have to have what we have. They, they, they wouldn't have the load necessarily of sure volume of work. But in my opinion, I think you're gonna have to have that. But there again...
But you wouldn't necessarily need two at a building. I mean, I'm, I'm just thinking that, that...
If, if, the way I see it, if this position pursued and, and proceeded further, that person in that position is probably gonna have a lot of say and a lot of recommendations when it comes to that.
But you're talking about the ADs of the...
Of how, the whole thing.
The three ADs in the system now.
Cause there's more than just stating this job description to making this happen. You know, there's, there's a whole network of issues and discussions and ha- plans and procedures and policy that, that would have to align with the position. I, I would say. And, you know, you, you would obviously have to look at, uh, building level funding. You would have to, you would have to look at that as in conjunction of what you're spending on the total package for supervision of athletics. You know, uh, that's kind of a, that's kind of a, uh, to me and my eyes right now, that's kind of a work in progress. So that's why it's kind of the job description now and then, you know, the funding if it could even be obtained.
And I certainly think it would need to be noted that it'd be K through twelve athletic director.
Yeah.
I just don't want, I mean, I just think that if this came about in the future, there's ways of working things out without having to add extra salaries. You know what I'm saying? Because if you, it, it, that, that would be the point where you would see how it's worked around.
I'm sorry. It might not be from the, it might not be from other athletics or other coaches or other supplements that we end up with positions and funding available. I mean, I don't know. I'd say whoever the new director of schools would probably have a lot of input as well, when it, if it got to that point.
Other discussion?
Can I say?
Sure.
Can I have a few minutes? I'll try to keep it brief.
All right.
Just one thing before I forget. Um, obviously, I think that we would want to wait on a new director before we even thought about moving forward with such a thing and get that new director's take on it. But, um, I, I want to thank the students and the teachers, the parents, the leaders in the community that did reach out in regards to this. Really appreciate them voicing their opinions, and we asked for your feedback, and you did that. And, uh, want to, uh, let Ms. Ackland know that we appreciate her coming and, um, expressing her opinion, giving us her thoughts. And so I won't echo what she said again about the, the, the sports clubs. I mean, I'm sorry, the, the school clubs, the FBLA, the, um, FFA, Host, uh, Interact, the list goes on. Because they are not compensated, and I think we're not trying to compare those clubs to sports teams. I think the idea and the point is that, um, if we've got the money to create this type of, uh, I'll say it again, executive level position here, um, then I feel like that we need to really think about priorities. And, um, those folks that, that are over the school clubs, I know they do a lot of this stuff during their school day, but there's a lot that bleeds over into the summer, uh, that's after school, even weekends. I know they're spending a lot of money out of their pockets. And I think if, if we've got money for something like this, why can we not compensate those club sponsors? And give them what they're earning? So, but really, um, obviously, I had, uh, some concerns at the last work session regarding this. Mostly about priorities, why, uh, in a situation that we are in academically, why this would take precedence over, um, academics? Or, and, and why we would want to, uh, invest funding into another position for athletics? If, if we're, in my opinion, if we're going to invest money, more money into athletics, which is not a bad thing, but let's make it something that will benefit the kids. That will benefit the students of Coffey County. I just don't, in my opinion, see how creating a job up here to supervise athletic directors who are already under supervision by their building principal could benefit the student athletes or the rest, obviously, the rest of the student body in our, in our system. That's my opinion. Um, it's no secret that we're deficient in some areas academically. We've got proficiency problems at middle school, we've got a, a elementary school on our target list, which puts us, puts us in jeopardy of funding, uh, losing funding. Um, if we cannot show growth, and if we've got, again, if we've got extra funding available, I don't see how we can justify where we are academically throwing it over into athletics. So, really, um, there's, there's two parts of what I wanna say, and I'll try to be as brief as I can. But, um, I tried to really think after this work session a couple weeks ago. I tried to really think about this objectively. And just take the facts. So I did my own research as well, and I tried to, to figure out what's the best way for me to, uh, find out, out of our one hundred and forty-one school districts in Tennessee, how many of those districts have a system-wide AD? And of the ones that do, does that system-wide AD wear different hats? Do they have other responsibilities besides just athletics or supervising their athletic directors? And, um, if they do, what are their enrollment numbers? So that we can compare apples to apples and not, we can't compare ourselves to Williamson County. We can't compare ourselves to Metro Nashville, Knox County. Those, those enrollment numbers are forty thousand, sixty thousand, eighty thousand. We are at forty-one hundred students. We're one tenth of the size of those districts that have the system-wide AD. And even those districts that do have the system-wide AD with those large numbers, all but just a handful of them, that position requires other responsibilities. They've got, uh, from what I understood, I, I, I've, I've skipped over a part. I reached out to TSBA and got them to collect some data for me on how many system-wide directors we had, et cetera. So, um, we, if, what I found was, with the exception of Bedford County and this South Central region, there's really nobody around us that has a system-wide AD. John Olive, I talked with him yesterday in Telahoma at, at our softball game. We had a in-person conversation. Although he said, you know, I don't wanna get into your politics, and I don't blame him at all. I told him I didn't blame him at all. Um, but he said, you know, he is the system-wide AD in Telahoma. But guys, he's also the AD for the entire high school, all of their sports. So he wears more than one hat. Um, and he is also, his office is located at Telahoma High School, not Central Office. But the, the districts that TA, TSBA found, that a lot, most of them, about two-thirds of the ones that they found that had the system-wide AD, um, had other duties. There, in Maury County, the Director of Nursing is also in charge of system-wide athletics. Roan and Robertson Counties, um, they actually give their system-wide athletic duties to the Deputy Director of Schools. Claiborne County, uh, has their Coordinator of School Health to take on system-wide athletics. Lots of districts use assistant principals for this. There was a district that used, uh, Director of Student Services also as Director of System Athletics. So, um, I, I, I want us to really think hard about this because I want, it's our job to make fiscally responsible decisions. And we are not really in a position to say, well, Williamson County or Rutherford County got, got this, so we need it too. Rutherford County has fifty thousand students. We have four thousand, system-wide. I also, I, I, I called Mr. Joins in Williamson County myself, and we talked. And he said, you know, in, in Williamson County, just at the high school level, he has, he manages over five thousand athletes. That's, we don't, we don't compare. And they have forty-one thousand students. He manages nine high schools and twelve middle schools. He said, he asked me, he said, how many high schools do you all have? And I said, one. And he said, and how many school, middle schools do you have feeding into that high school? And I said, one. And he laughed. And, and, and i- in, in his opinion, you know, he didn't say one way or another, but he said, if that position was created, they're obviously gonna need more job duties than system-wide athletics because it's just not a full-time position.
Okay, in the interest of time, can, can you?
I'll wrap it up, yes. So, anyway, uh, just to say, um, our, our priorities, um, I feel like are misaligned with introducing this. And I know that it's just approving the job description, but we can come back to this at any time and approve a job description that would hopefully include the training that we were talking about. I, I just feel like at this time, it, um, would, it, it is not wise, and it is not a popular decision to say that we are willing to even consider or investing our money into a system-wide athletic director job for a district as small as we are.
All right.
I would love for our board members to consider both sides of it. I understand, I'm one of nine people, and, um, but I, I, I want us to make a responsible decision. And I think we can always come back and create this job description later and include the things that we have already said are missing tonight. So that's all I have to say.
Thank you for putting, for putting together those numbers. You did some good research.
Thank you. It was a lot of work.
Any other discussion? I know Mr. Gillie wants to say something, but, but until you do, does anybody else have anything that hasn't pitched in yet?
I'd like to, you know, I'd, I'd like to say that, you know, with this here, I, I have to agree with Ms. Matthews that we need to, uh, you know, I think this job descriptions of, there's some aspects of it that's a little vague. And I think that, you know, it should go back to a work session to, to, to shore it up, to, you know, and then be re- proposed. But, you know, with that being said, I have to agree with Ms. Matthews on the fact that, um, we're a very small district, one high school, and technically, two middle schools leading because we have the city. But still, we're, we're a very small, you know, district and, you know, personally, myself, I don't feel we need this. But that's neither here nor there.
I, I would like to say something. I understand exactly what y'all are saying. And I agree with you on a lot of it. But one thing I think is we do need someone that is district-wide because there's no continuity from elementary to middle to high school. And there are so many sports that start in elementary, and a lot of these kids get lost in the shuffle because there's no one really spotting them and saying, oh, that kid could really flourish if, if we, you know, if we allow that child to, to participate. And a lot of times, those kids get lost because they're not in AAU, they're not in, they don't have training, special training that parents can pay for. And my thinking is that ma- not necessarily additional position, but some, someone that's resp- that oversees the whole athletic program. So that you've got a bird's eye view of everything from K through twelve. And, uh, and not necessarily to develop, uh, state champions, but to include as many kids as we can in our athletic programs. And not just a, a few that's, that's lucky enough to have parents that can push them and get them into these sports. And, uh, hopefully, if we had a system-wide or someone that's responsible and, and not necessarily a hundred percent, you know what I'm, and, because we've got three now. And, uh, but there's, there's gotta be one, in my opinion, that where the buck stops. And, uh, that's just my thinking. And as far, you know, it's something we do need to consider, whether this is passed or not, but something to look at maybe in the future.
Yeah, I wanna say that if we continue to grow and we get up near those numbers that Rutherford County or Williamson County, even Williamson County, uh, or, or, I'm sorry, not Williamson, Wilson County, you know, we're there at twenty thousand. If we get up near those numbers, at what point, you know, that happens, then I'm all for considering this. But, but only if we grow to, uh, to deem the need for it at that time.
Mr. Gillie?
I'm gonna, I'm gonna start off with the last ten minutes or fifteen or whatever, what was, what that was. The, every school you described with twenty, thirty, and forty thousand kids, we have to play those school. That is who we have to compete against with our forty-one hundred students. You can't do enough. And, and before I go any further, further on that, I love every single one of our interest groups. FBLA, Beta Club, FFA, Skills USA, those are interest clubs. When tax money comes down, state and federal tax money, we appropriate those money to two avenues, academics and athletics through the state of Tennessee and the federal government. No school systems contribute, and no school systems get involved with financing of interest groups. Some people call them special interest groups. I don't like that term. They're just interest groups because most of them and all of them, I, I, I kinda hold dear to my heart. I agree. I wish we could fund every single one of them. But that's not what we're allowed to do with our taxpayers' money to interest groups. Athletics and academics avenue and tunnel through our purview. We do have that ability. Everyone, and, 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 and that kinda points to where I'm talking about of what is in our purview, who we have to compete with, what we have to tend with. All of our, our, our schools and the, and these big massive schools we are forced to compete with and do with. We can't have enough athletic directors and people trying to track fundraising. We have millions of dollars of fundraising that go through our school system in case you didn't know that. They need all the help they can get. And if we had administrative help with direct connections to, to, to people that, that ma- maybe Mr. Parsley, just for an example, maybe he, he just don't wanna rock a boat. Uh, he, maybe he don't wanna rock a boat to argue a case on behalf of our students that may be getting done wrong in a basketball game or a volleyball game or something else or, or wrong standing in a class, classification. I mean, we, we, we look at what we can do. We look at what we can fund. We, we try to find avenues to help and do every, I wish we could fund every single thing we have in group function, organization, everything.
Are you saying that we are not allowed?
I'm not done talking in my debate. You, you, I let you talk, I'm talking. This has been blown so far out of proportion. This has been blown so far out of proportion that we're just talking about a potential job description that could help our athletic cities, systems that I believe can in this community. I'm not asking for any funding. We cannot enact this or even hire, even discuss this unless funding is discussed. All I am asking for is the approval of a job description that we can work with in further work sessions. We can work with in further meetings. That's all I'm trying to do is open the doorway and the pathway for consideration in the future. And with that, Mr. Chair, I call question.
Okay. Bring the debate to an end. We will then proceed to vote.
And, uh... Mr. Chair, he, he called question, you have to vote on the question.
Oh.
On, on the, to, to draw to question.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
You, you don't take it straight to the vote.
Yeah, that's right. Okay, sorry about that. So, we need to vote to end the discussion. So, Mr. Cordell.
Aye.
Is...
To end the discussion.
Yes. Ms. Yentch?
Aye.
Mr. Hanser? Ms. Jones? Ms. Hodge?
Aye.
Ms. Matthews?
Aye.
Mr. Coon? Mr. Gillie? And I will vote aye. Also, the discussion is done. And then we need to vote on the motion to approve the athletic director description, job description. So, Ms. Yentch, you're first. What's that?
I said, thank you.
Aye.
All right. Mr. Hanser?
Aye.
Ms. Jones?
Aye.
Ms. Hodge?
Aye.
Ms. Matthews?
No.
Uh, Mr. Coon?
No.
Mr. Gillie?
Aye.
Mr. Cordell? And the chair will vote aye. That passes seven to two. All right. Next up on the agenda is the ever-popular bleacher bid. Back for its, what, third, third life, fourth life?
Can, can, can we limit what the deputy director has to explain about the bleachers again? Because I know he's tired of it.
All right. Mr. Shore?
Okay, put out the, the, the bid for bleachers. Explain just a little bit what was put on, out for bid. Three different bids. Was that requested from each of the companies? One was for the modifications that was requested, which is the widening of the aisles and putting the handrails in and so forth. All the different things there. The second one was wood bleachers at twenty-four inch aisles. That's the legroom, twenty-four inch. And then wood bleachers at twenty-six inch legroom. And I went ahead and put the twenty-six inch. Ms. Jones brought that up and I checked into it and ultimately, if we do the twenty-six inch and go that direction, you would be losing one aisle, or not one aisle, one row of bleachers so that it doesn't go out into the floor. We like the amount of flooring space we have on the sidelines. So it would actually keep it where it's at, just losing seating capacity. We had two companies to put in, turn in bids. And that's bleachers and seats and Tobe Vine. And I do want to say Tobe Vine is here, a representative is here with Tobe Vine. There is, on the Tobe Vine, there was a, a couple of exclusions that they did not include in their bid. And I put that in here so that you could see. So, that bid, the way I'm understanding, would be more than what's on the actual page because it, it does include architectural fees. The other company put it in, added that part in. Tobe Vine did not. The other thing was the protective of the flooring. Tobe Vine put in for tarp only. If anything else more was required, then that would cost the system more money as well for the, the protective of, say plywood going on the floor. The other company said that that was part of their bid. They're, they're gonna protect the floor no matter what. So, those are the two things you need to look at when you're making the decision if you want to go with new bleachers. If you go with the modifications only, like I said, we had it from bleachers and seats. Tobe Vine did not bid on it and they did put a note in there as well about fifty-year-old bleachers, not made a few modifications to those bleachers. So, that, that should be all the information. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
Okay, we would need a motion. And I guess the, the choice is if we are doing, gonna do the modifications or the new bleachers? So if we're gonna do the modifications, there's only one bid. If we're gonna do new bleachers, then you have to decide whether you want the twenty-four inch or the twenty-six inch. And then whichever is the, the bid you want to accept there.
And, Mr. Chairman, one, one other thing I did leave out. If you pick the modifications, that's the price. Then there's a twenty-six dollars and seventy-four cents per linear foot on changing out planks because you don't know how many planks you're, so you have to do it by linear feet. And that's, that's how it's actually marked. So, it, it would be, have to be in that, included in the motion if that's, if that's the choice.
Oh, okay.
Mr. Chairman, I would also suggest, if you don't mind, that Mr. Shores and Mr. Parsley and possibly an A.D. from the high school look at the boards and determine which ones need to be replaced.
Okay.
If that's the direction.
If that's the direction you want to go.
If that's the direction. And do we have any recommendations?
Well, there's not but one person that's, that's bid on that and that would be the Hussey Company, which is, who's been bidding before.
Right.
Because the other company did not bid on modifications.
Okay. Do we have a mo?
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Gillie?
Asking for a motion.
Yes, we're looking for a motion.
I move that we accept the modifications of bleachers and seats to repair and modify our bleachers as we've discussed numerous times in numerous meetings.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Ms. Hodge, seconds? Okay, discussion.
I just, I feel like modification, in just my opinion, I'm gonna make it quick. Modification would be our best avenue. As I think we have discussed before, that new sets of bleachers and new bleachers, they are very expensive. But the aspect that we don't know that we're gonna be in that school forever and they probably won't be able to be used in another school, I think that would be potentially, could be potentially a waste.
But we got a different price here now on new bleachers though, that's substantially lower.
Hmm, I think it's about a hundred and ten.
A hundred thousand dollars cheaper than what it was before. What was, what was the price before?
I would have to go and look it up.
You mind going and looking?
Yeah.
Go my, if you don't mind, go look in, look at it for us, Kevin.
The modifications are right at a half a million less.
It should be in the last four.
For those that don't know what we're looking at, it's right at a half a million less on modifications.
Well, it's like eight hundred and something thousand dollars, almost nine.
I think it's around seven fifty, but I don't, don't hold you to that.
You know, when we did it before, I opted for the new bleachers. But the more I sit in the seat and see the expenses of this school system, I really think the modifications are the way to go now, so.
Did you find it?
So I looked back at the last budget amendment that, for, presented to the board for the bleachers. So the wooden bleachers, the budget amendment was for seven hundred and twenty-two thousand, nine hundred and fifty-one. For, for the plastic bleachers, seven hundred and one thousand, three eighty-eight. And then for modifications was one ninety-five, nine nineteen.
Twenty, twenty to thirty, Scott.
Any questions? Further discussion? The motion that is on the floor and seconded is to accept the modifications bid from bleachers and seats for a hundred and eighty-seven thousand, sixty-five dollars and forty-two cents plus a plank cost of twenty-six, seventy-four per linear foot. Is that correct, Mr. Gillie?
Yes, sir.
Uh, Mr. Hanser, I, I just looked it up and, yeah, I can't remember exactly what she said, but it was seven hundred twenty-two thousand, nine hundred and fifty-one dollars and sixty-two cents.
Thank you.
All right. We are going to vote then. Unless there's further questions. Mr. Hanser?
Aye.
Ms. Jones?
Aye.
Ms. Hodge?
Aye.
Ms. Matthews?
Aye.
Mr. Coon?
Aye.
Mr. Gillie?
Aye.
Mr. Cordell?
Aye.
Ms. Yentch?
Aye.
And I will vote aye. That passes nine to zero to do the modifications.
I feel like we need a round of applause. It is about time. We decided something.
We probably need a sip of champagne.
When, when can we, uh, can we do this, start on this? Is this, was this through bleachers and seats? So we could, we could potentially do this pretty quick then.
Okay, it, it, in the bid, it had to be able to be finished by the end of this summer.
Yeah.
So.
Whenever I'd talk to them.
Modifications.
I mean, was there an issue? Did we need to take a recess or anything?
Not, I know.
No. So we are to be able to have this done by next basketball season?
Should be, yes. Uh, let me, it should be completed by October thirteenth, twenty twenty-five. So it's October, and they gave through fall break so that, or spring break, so that they can.
Yeah.
No, fall break.
We.
Fall break, sorry.
We can box this thing off and let them have that side, pretty much. We can give them that side of gym. All he said is if we can rope it off or put barriers up or maybe potentially a fence to keep everybody out there at night, that we, he could, he could do that.
I, I, I'd have to work with him, but it has to be finished by October thirteenth, twenty twenty-five, which is after fall break. So it'd be done before basketball season next year, yes.
Okay, do we want to take a quick recess? Anybody's, we can move on then, so.
Wish we could postpone thirteen more agenda items till later future date.
I, you know, I probably need to step out, but we can move on. Um, next up, we have the, the high school paving, drainage and striping bid. And we have two quoted prices from Tinsley Asphalt and Row Construction Group. Mr. Shores?
Uh, it's, it's fairly straightforward. There were some changes to the scope of work from the last time that we actually put this out to bid. Uh, and so we're actually getting a little bit more work done for seven hundred dollars less if we go with the Tinsley, uh, bid. Uh, so I, I, my, as you can see, the director's recommendation here is Tinsley's asphalt. And if there's any questions after a, a motion and a second, I'd be glad to answer any I can.
Okay, it's the director's recommendation that we go with the Tinsley bid. Do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Motion made by Hodge and seconded by Gillie. Okay, I'm not sure where, who started a while ago. Did you?
Do you, any discussion?
Oh, any discussion?
Yeah, I've got, uh, the problem that I've got with this is that we're not putting, there wasn't any type of, these bids are pretty bleak. Doesn't say what type of asphalt we're using. Didn't say, just says two inches. It didn't say E-mix. It don't say any type of, of mix. Uh, it doesn't have any binder underneath it. So we're gonna put two inches of finished asphalt, if they want to, on top of this. Buses are gonna be driving on it. You've got a dumpster back there that, a dumpster pad, there's no concrete on. There's nothing in the bid for that.
Do we need a motion in a second?
You do have a motion.
You did. You're in discussion right now.
Okay, all right, so, okay, okay. I'm brain dead.
So, I mean, if, if you talk to, go and talk to some of these guys, which I have, this may be last two years before it starts coming back up again. And we're gonna spend two hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars for something that we're not giving, gonna. It does, it has no binder underneath it whatsoever. There was nothing in the bid for it. Why? What did we do? Why did we?
Okay, the question is, you know, why, I, I went through Kenny Sadler Associates to, to come up with the, the drawings for it and the recommendations for what we need. And that's what he came up with. So that's, that's where it's come from.
Could we, should, shouldn't we have some say-so on how we're gonna bid this before we put it out for bid?
We do have say-so, but I depend on, uh, I depended on.
Could we see the bid before we get it? Shouldn't we be able to see the bid before we let, we let it go?
I did see the bid.
I never seen it. I never seen a, this job description in that bid.
I didn't say you did. I said I did.
Okay. Don't you think the board should?
Normally do not, but I guess if, if the board wishes to, we can.
I would have liked to have seen one so that we would have, that we could have seen what, because this, this ain't gonna last. It may last two years. I mean, you can, you can, I mean, I've done this, obviously. And you've got two inches of asphalt on all this. It's probably not gonna last without any binder underneath it at all. Binder is pretty much a primer that you put down on top of asphalt, underneath asphalt before you put the asphalt on top of it. So you're bypassing that step and then you're just going straight to asphalt.
And, uh, Mr. Sadler, you, you can ask Mr. Sadler, but he, he actually, whenever he was giving it to me, he said that there was reasons why not to have binder in it.
What were they?
Part, and, and I can't go through everything that he says. I mean, he's, he's the engineer on it.
We need to before we spend two hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars on it. Wouldn't you think?
Scotty, uh, I went to, to Mr. Sadler.
I understand, Kevin.
He's expert in this area. He's the one I depended on.
I've got forty.
I'm, I'm proud for you.
And, and others, and others do too.
I appreciate you being proud.
And, and Scott, others do too. And you have. You've got a lot of experience. I'm not, and I don't wanna, I just wanna break this right here for just a minute. But I've built, I've built over four hundred subdivision lots and miles and miles of roads in this county. And I've built them in swamp. I've built them on good land. Now, we do have, and you've got to admit, we do have a lot of base already out there. We have a lot of base that has been drove on, compacted, drove on, compacted, drove on, compacted for fifty years now. There is a really good base. Your, your binder is not necessarily for bonding. It is also for bridging.
That's not true.
It's also for bridging. That's why it is a coarser stone than the finished grade. We all know it, especially the ones that's had to pay for it. But, but I don't wanna, I don't wanna get it, I'm not saying that you're incorrect that we shouldn't have had that in the specs and we shouldn't have had it analyzed and looked at. And if there is a great reasoning behind not, I would like to hear it as well.
And, and some of the reasons is exactly as, uh, Mr. Gillie stated, that it is a very compacted area that has been driven on, over for years. The other problem that we run into back there is the, the grade that's already there. Uh, wherever you start throwing binder in it as well, you're gonna start raising the height of it. And we're already running into problems with the possibility of water getting into the CTE shops. Uh, those were two of the reasons that he brought up. But more than anything, we have the, we have the compacted area that's already there. Uh, there is a small section that he did put in that we do need the binder. So that is included as the places he felt like the binder was needed. Uh, it's over there next to the softball field. Um, so in, as far as the buses going back there, the buses that we have is the smaller buses that will be traveling. That's pretty much the only, the largest items that go back there. The dumpster truck, uh, the dumpsters were moved wherever the new CTE shop was installed or put built. They were put there for temporary use. They're gonna have to be moved again. So that's, they're not in their normal spot anyway, so they're gonna have to be moved. Uh, so you shouldn't have very much weight back there other than mainly your travel vehicles, your, your, your pedestrian vehicles. Residential, sorry.
Where are you gonna put the dumpster? It's not on the, it's not on the bed neither.
I didn't say I knew. I haven't talked to, to Mr. Parsley about that.
Think that'd be a very important piece of information, Kevin? Where are you gonna put the dumpsters? I mean, you said that you're, the dumpster, the, the dump truck's not gonna be driving on it. How do you know? You don't even know where they're gonna be.
The dumpsters are, right now, the dumpsters are in between the two spots.
I understand.
And, and it's, they're supposed to be over on the other side.
I'm just telling you what these two guys that bid on this have told me.
Okay.
And I'm just saying, this is my, my part on it. I just don't, we could put binder down and drive on it for a couple of years and then come back to put asphalt over the top of that. But where we put the water line in between the CTE building and the, the shops, it's been dug up and that dirt's contaminated. It's, it's got dirt in it. So we're gonna have to take that dirt out. There's nothing in the bid that says that you have to take that out. It's got dirt in it, so we're gonna have to take that dirt out, there's nothing in the bid that says that you have to take that out, cause that's contaminated now. It's got dirt in the gravel. So, I mean, just that the, the, the bids, it just wasn't very, you know, there's a whole lot left to be desired about the bids, a whole lot there that, that they're not gonna go by. There's nothing there to go by.
What would you propose, Mr. Hensher?
I would propose, you know, going and, and getting and looking at this and maybe going over it with the engineer ourselves and putting down binder.
I thought there was a meeting that that took place. I thought Mr. Sadler and, and.
There was.
And, and, and these bidders, there was a meeting. There was a meeting to discuss that and to get the parameters and to get things planned out and discussed, and if ain't, Mr., Mr., Mr. Parsley might have been there, I'm not.
I was there for part, part of that.
Yeah, yeah. But, that's.
That's my opinion, I just, yeah, I, I am now too, but that's my opinion, but I've just, you know, there's a ditch back there that we put a water line in that's already settling, and you're gonna put two inches of asphalt on a ditch that's already settling. So that's probably not gonna last very long. There's nothing in the bid that says you have to do anything specific for that ditch that's already settling, so you're just gonna put two inches of asphalt on top of that. There's nothing to say that, that that's even compacted. Cause they're not gonna compact it because it's not in the bid. It's just very vague, and, you know, of a, you know, that's my opinion, guys.
So what would you recommend, though?
Going back over it and, uh, compacting these areas and maybe putting down, and putting down binder, looking at prices to put down binder instead of just putting down asphalt. Right off the bat.
Is there any warranty on this, on their, uh, on the paving, you know?
I, I don't, I don't have anything down about the warranty, no.
There is no.
No, I don't.
There is none.
What is the difference? I know there's seventy-one thousand, I know the road, what, were they doing something more or is it just the same thing?
If, if you look at the two, two bids, uh, you, you could actually break it down, as, as far as the drainage part of it, it's, it's basically the same within five hundred. Uh, the complete paving, silent described, it, it starts jumping up. One of the things that you're gonna possibly run into, and this is just speculation, I, one, one of these companies actually makes their own asphalt, whereas the other one would have to purchase it from one of the two companies, and that's just speculation. So, that, that could be the, the big difference in it, but I, without asking them, I couldn't tell you.
So the, the higher bid is not putting the binder in either, is that correct?
They, they both follow the exact same, um, specifications and, and bid spec sheets. Um, now I'll tell you what we can do, if, uh, if, if this board chooses to do so and goes with the lowest bid, then I can go into negotiations with a, uh, Tinsley's, with a binder and, and bring that back to you as a possibility of putting it in. Do what?
If he accepted or not, you could bring it back to the board.
I, I can, yes, um, a- as far as with the binder. I will tell you, from the way I understand, if a binder is, is, uh, negotiating with it, there's gonna be a lot more, um, uh, excavation work that's gonna have to take place. A lot more digging out, a lot more removal of materials, uh, because you are also already high and you're gonna start draining into the CTE building.
And double the mix of.
And, and I will tell you, wherever you start doing the more, and, and I'm not saying it doesn't need to happen, I'm just saying, if you do that, you're getting ready to create more cost.
The, the ditch, there's not anything in the specs that says what you're gonna fill this ditch up with. Whenever you put the, the drainage in, there's nothing that says anything about what you're supposed to use to backfill with or anything, Kevin.
Once again, I went through my, the engineer.
Understand, I understand what you're saying.
Person I use.
We need to maybe find somebody else to look at it.
Or we should have came to when everybody, even I got, is the capital projects that we met out there. And I, and Scott, I don't wanna, I don't wanna get into it with you about it, I mean, it's just.
Get into me.
I know, but we could, we could sit here and beat this thing to death when we had opportunities to speak up and, and, and get the specs and the plans and.
I never seen the specs. I never seen the specs after the specs was drawn up.
Well, I mean, I guess if we need to make a rule in there that you're provided those for approval before the board, and I guess it's kinda what we're also doing right now, we're not necessarily, I mean, we don't have to approve this bid.
Okay.
But we need to make headway of which direction and what we wanna do.
Right.
I think. If, if that makes sense.
So what, what would you like to see us do, though? That's.
I, if, if this is the, all that, that, uh, that, uh, Mr. Sadler's got, maybe we need to get another engineer and let another engineer look at it. If we wanna go by engineer, let's get another engineer and let him look at it.
Mr. Ballard, as of right now, you have a motion in a second.
We do, um. So we can just call the question and, or just.
Mr. Chair, I do, I call question.
Call the question, okay. Um, all right, then.
Would you repeat the motion, please?
Okay, the call of question is to stop discussion.
The call of question is to stop the discussion, so we would need to vote on that and we would start with Ms. Jones again. Call the question.
Aye.
Matthews.
Aye.
Mr. Coon.
Aye.
Mr. Gillian.
Aye.
Mr. Cordell.
Aye.
Mr. Hinch.
Aye.
Mr. Answer.
Aye.
And I will vote aye, that is nine to zero. All right, now we move to vote. And the motion is to approve the Tinsley asphalt with, uh, for two hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars, is that correct? I was out of the room when we. I'll confess. All right, and, uh, we would start with Ms. Hodge.
Do we have to start with Ms. Hodge?
It's your turn, sorry.
Aye.
Ms. Matthews.
Aye.
Mr. Coon.
No.
Mr. Gillie.
Aye.
Mr. Cordell.
Nay.
Ms. Hinch.
I'm gonna have to vote nay, cause I got two construction guys voting nay, so.
Mr. Hensher.
No, nay.
I will vote, or, uh, Ms. Jones.
I don't know, I don't have a clue, abstaining.
Okay, abstaining counts as a no vote by law.
Oh, oh, okay.
In Tennessee, that is the state law.
Well, there's really not a abstaining in there, is there?
No, not really, so.
Read the vote, let's move on.
All right, and, uh, I will vote aye, so one, two, three, four. I think that is four aye, and then there's five nay. That's four to four with a, with, um.
It fails.
It does not, it fails anyway, so. All right, so I guess we're back to the drawing board.
No asphalt, what's next?
All right, next up, after-school program. And is Ms. Garner still here? Oh, there we go, you're hiding in the back there.
I didn't know if y'all, just wanted to start with that, but I think I'll give you everything I have.
Yeah, we just, quick discussion of the options real quick, because I know we discussed them at the work session.
And are they in the pack, um, are the options in y'all's packet? Yeah.
Yes, they are, we're looking at them here on the screen, and so, we're gonna need to vote on one of these choices.
Okay, and so that's what you all should have, and we discussed it in the work session, we went over it and, or, yeah, I think the work session and a committee meeting, um, so you have several different options as far as like, um, an amount that you could possibly charge parents. Um, we looked at five dollars a day, seven dollars a day, and eight seventy-five a day. And any of those options would require, um, some funding from, um, the general funds balance. Um, and this is all dependent on the number of students that do stay for the program. This is a guesstimate based off the amount of students that are staying this year. Um, and the students that, whose family said that they would stay if they paid or had to pay. Um, I think for the most part, I looked at maybe a quarter of the students staying, so those are the, the numbers that I utilized whenever I was doing the calculations. But just to give you some, um, updated data, um, because I think in our committee meeting, um, we had just kinda finished up December. So currently, our daily average attendance from January till the end of February, we have about three hundred and thirty-one students that are staying every day. Um, and, um, I've gotten the data, um, from our, we did kindergarten and first, uh, fluency assessments. Um, and we've done them twice so far, and in every school, we've seen, um, you know, lots of great data reported from just the fluency that the, the younger kids are, um, improving on. I know, uh, Janice, she can talk, um, to that as far as like the academics and the progress that they're making. Um, but that's all I have. Um, if you have any questions, I'll answer them to the best of my ability.
What, uh, what, what schedules of programming and what, what is intended with this? Just, are we, are we more looking at the old ESP just to babysitting, or are we still looking at the teaching aspect of it and?
Well, in some of the, um, programs, like the, the ones that I have proposed, it's a Monday through Friday. Um, and it starts when school starts and when school ends, and that's with a teacher for at least an hour. Now, in some of the options you have where you'll have, you know, a lower ratio with your teachers, like you'll have one teacher, but that one teacher maybe has two grades, or the next one up, that one teacher may have to rotate, you know, throughout the week to see some students each week. It's not, this is a really hard cut to what we have right now as far as like our ratios and the teachers that will be working with small, um, groups and stuff.
And just to be clear, the only difference between these three programs we're looking at is the parent contribution and thus the hit to fund balance.
Well, yes, and, I mean, like, like on the back page where it says, you know, if the school board does not, you know, fund any, then you're pretty much just looking at a site director and maybe one.
Back page.
Teaching, oh, okay, and maybe one teaching assistant. I just, um, tried to figure out what it would look like if there was no funding coming from the school board.
Right.
Um, but yeah, that's the difference, it's just how long we have our teachers and how many teachers that we have depends on how much funding you all are providing and how much we charge for the program.
But the, the, the pink, yellow, and green are all basically the same, it's just how much the parents are contributing, right?
Yes.
Mr. Chair, can I make a motion?
You may.
I would like to make a motion that we accept the first option where the fund balance would take a hit of a hundred and twenty thousand in order to keep excellence as close to how it is now and take the price off the parents as much as possible.
Ms. Hodge makes a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Mr. Gillie seconds, okay. Any discussion?
Mr. Chair, can I ask Ms. April a quick?
Oh, go ahead, let me restate the motion here, the motion is to accept the, uh, the, um, the after-school program for the five dollar a day option, which would require a one hundred and twenty thousand dollar, two hundred and two sixty-nine estimate. That's a pretty darn accurate estimate. So, Mr. Gillie.
Wanna ask a question of Ms. April real quick.
Okay.
Hate to put you on the spot.
Okay.
Did you just do it?
She's been there before. Maintenance of effort. If we don't change our budget and we don't raise our budget, is it every three years that the county is mandated to raise that budget a certain percentage of maintenance of effort?
So they're required to meet a percentage of our, of our TESA allotment, so that does increase each year. Um, so that comes with our TESA estimate we get each, like, we started getting one in February and it told us what their maintenance of effort was. Um, so they are required to meet that, but they're already meeting that, um, they're.
For this next year, yes, but in the future, like, I, I know, I know that if we don't, if we don't raise our budget and our budget doesn't change, I think it's a period of three years, I think it's up to two to three percent that they could be, they have to contribute just maintenance of effort and raise our budget that much.
Just looking at maintenance of effort right now, and I know you're talking about future, yes, it probably will increase, and I think there is percentage changes, like, as the years increase. I just don't know those right off of my head.
Do you have an idea of the, the amount?
We're already, we're, they're already input, like, they're already way over on their maintenance of effort. And that's because of the split that we have between the city and the county, so like, I have to perform that calculation every year. And so, we're really, those funds, even if they didn't have maintenance, maintenance of effort, we would already be getting more than, like, I guess we would have to have maintenance effort, but we, we're already getting more, so I don't know that, um, the only time it might affect us is if revenue went down. Like, if revenue dropped drastically in the county, that the county would have to figure out what they were gonna do, like, as far as.
But I was just looking at, you know, additional funding, it's almost mandated by law that, even if we sit here and we didn't raise our budget or need more money annually in our annual budget, we're still incurring and, and, and grasping more funds than we're actually asking for.
That's correct.
Yeah.
And that, and that's because our revenue's so good, so it would really, you know, take a huge tank in the revenue to, for us to lose funding. Or, um, if cities, like, so city, city school would overpass, surpass us in, um, attendance, then that could also, we could also see a drastic impact if that was ever happen as well.
So we're always gonna get some kind of possible little extension of funding annually.
They have to meet their TESA maintenance of, um, effort.
That's all.
Okay.
Probably didn't pertain to this whatsoever, but it had to do with hitting the fund balance in my head.
Understood, understood. Any other discussion?
Question, are there any funds anywhere else that could possibly pay for part of this program instead of just taking it directly out of fund balance? Cause I know there's ways of, of other, other programs funding something of this nature, partially.
So I don't know of any, I know that we used the old ESP money to fund part of this year. I don't know of anything, are you talking like grants, or is that what you're speaking about?
About, uh, you know, any of the government programs that we get in the federal projects, could they contribute? Or, uh, do we have any money left in general school that, uh, is just, you know, a big hit for fund balance? Uh, that, that does not serve the entire county, you know, all the kids.
So we, I mean, we did get an increase in our TESA estimate, and that will help, that will help some.
Right.
That will help some.
Could we not use some of that?
Well, it just depends on too, cause a lot of, so, a big portion of that, our increase has to go towards certified raises. So it just depends on what's left over after we do those raises.
We did receive more TESA funding than we were expecting, is that correct?
We did, um, but, so like, I think I calculated, we received, in our first estimate, so like, it'll change each month. Um, we received around nine hundred thousand dollars more than we've got this last, this school year. So we saw an increase of nine hundred thousand, but five hundred, almost six hundred thousand of that we have to use on certified raises.
So we have three hundred thousand basically more to play with than what we did last year.
Basically, yes. And that, I haven't, I haven't estimated local yet because I haven't, um, gotten those from the county. So I don't, I don't know what local looks like yet, as far as budget.
Is it possible to use that for after-school program?
So TESA funds are not restricted, um, the only restriction is that we have to use that five hundred and whatever thousand dollars on raises. That's the only restriction that.
The other three hundred.
But also, think about, we have to also, if, like, could be used to raises for classified staff or whatever. Yes, it can be used, um, so when I say five hundred and thirty, five hundred and sixty thousand, that doesn't count. That's just certified people, so if there was anything done that was for any, when else that would also decrease that number of our.
Meaning non-certified, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
So yes, it can be used for that, um, but there's other things in the budgets, you know, we have. Um, but there's other things in the budgets, you know, we have.
Yes.
Utility increases and we have diesel increases and there's just lots of other things that increase in the budget as well, so.
What would we have done if we hadn't gotten that? If you're talking about increases, we would just have to, you know, if we hadn't gotten a sub, you know, an extra bonus of the TESA funding.
Well, this is just.
Cause we have to pay those bills anyway.
Yeah, so we would have just, you have seen a budget that would have hit the fund balance.
Right.
That much more.
And I know you're diligently looking for grants too, so.
I am. I just submitted one, um, last Friday, but this would be supplemental. The two that I'm actually working on is just supplemental for what we, what, what we will have in place. It's nothing that would fund the entire program.
Okay.
But it could, it is towards after-school program?
Yes.
Okay. I have, um, a couple of questions. Um, on the, the plan that's in pink for a hundred and twenty, um, how many teachers and how many aides are at each school on that plan? I'm calling it a plan. I don't know if it's really the right term for it, but.
Yeah, and that's, that's actually broke down in my spreadsheet. I didn't print out the whole spreadsheet. But if you think about, so, um, if we're at our three bigger schools, our three bigger schools are New Union, North Coffee and Hillsborough. And so I think that I probably said four teachers a day for an hour, Monday through Thursday. Remember, we had discussed in our committee meeting that on Friday, because we thought attendance might be lower, that we would not have, um, teachers on that day. So that did save some money whenever I was trying to, you know, cut down.
A lot of teachers don't assign homework for the weekend. So they would likely not have anything to work on that day anyway.
So that's, I would say four teachers each day for those bigger schools. Um, one to two teachers, the smaller schools. So that'd be them rotating throughout the week.
So how about on the second one in the yellow, how many teachers, how many aides?
And I would probably say that's half. I probably cut it in half for that one. And I'm just trying to, I didn't.
I don't have it in front of me either.
Yeah.
Two, around two or three teachers?
Yeah, I mean, it's cutting it drastically. I mean, if you look at the, um, the cost, yeah, I would say I cut it by half. And then this la- last one, it's very minimal. Like maybe two teachers for the bigger schools and one teacher for the smaller schools.
I had a teacher ask me, is this, um, this proposal, does it involve, is this including the middle school or are we sending those middle school excellence kids over to New Union?
Yeah, that's what we had discussed, that, um, we would send the middle school, um, the middle school kids that did want to stay, we would, um, send them to their elementary school.
So our middle school, um, after-school workers, we, they, they won't be doing after-school anymore? We won't need them or?
Depending on if there are openings at the elementary schools.
Okay.
That's a possibility.
Okay, gotcha. Okay.
Are you talking about the professionals? How, how could they get there by three fifteen?
Well, sometimes we won't be, we aren't able to start academics till three thirty. Some schools, I think at like Hillsborough, New Union, buses aren't, teachers aren't through with bus duty until three thirty. So sometimes academics don't start till three thirty.
Yeah, I wouldn't think they could start at three fifteen anyway, because that's actually the,
Yeah.
the end of their school workday. So it'd have to be at least three twenty. Um, I have a question from Ms. Melson. Uh, has all that ESP money been used?
So yes, we'll use it this year, but I think there was around sixty thousand. So I think the budget amendment was around three hundred-ish thousand and we, we've, um.
So couldn't we use that toward this?
Well, we, we already, we've already, we'll already use it in this school year. Cause it, it offset that three hundred.
I didn't get, I'm sorry. I didn't understand it. So you, you're using that up this year? I think in addition to the money that we.
So it offset what we hit fund balance this year. So I think it decreased, I think sixty-five thousand from fund balance, um, decreased that. I think the budget was around three fifty-ish, three nine, I can't, I can't, I'd have to look it up. So basically instead of pulling that entire amount out of fund balance, that sixty thousand will offset it. So it'll reduce the amount that we take from fund balance this year.
For this year?
Yes, ma'am.
And if my numbers are correct, and I'm not, I mean, I'm not in April, but I keep up with every penny that's spent. And I should come under about sixteen percent, um, less than what I think we had budgeted for. So that's a little extra money.
All right. Further questions? We then are voting on the, um, the motion is to approve the five dollar a day program for the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six school year for the after-school program. So let's start with, uh, Ms. Matthews.
Aye.
Mr. Coon.
Aye.
Mr. Gillie.
Aye.
Ms. Cordell.
He said aye.
Oh, did he say aye? Okay.
He, he just quit.
Ms. Inch.
Aye.
Mr. Hanser.
Aye.
Ms. Jones.
Aye.
Ms. Hodge.
Aye.
And I will vote aye. That passes nine to zero. So we have an after-school program for next year.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tony.
Thank you, Ms. Carter. All right. Next up is the Bonnaroo Agreement and Dr. Powell.
Yes, sir. This is the agreement that we've had for the last couple of three, at least. The money-wise, it's up to twelve, we, they, they will pay us in this budget twelve thousand dollars, which was what was agreed upon last year. I think that was upped a little bit either last year before last. I'm not sure which. But, uh, I've talked to Mr. Parsley, the days that they will be there, uh, are a little bit inconvenient because we have summer school, but he has worked around that, so that should not be a problem. So I would suggest that, or would recommend that we go ahead and do this and we pay him the twelve thou-, uh, they would pay us the twelve thousand dollars. And I think that money, most of it goes back to the high school. Uh, we will keep, based on what April tells me, I don't know the actual number, but we'll keep some of it at the central office for expenses that we incur. And then the, but the majority will go to the high school and Mr. Parsley disperses that. Based on, if you want to know what his programs, what he does with it, you're welcome to talk to him about it. But this is the same lease that we did last year and I'd recommend it as such.
All right. Do we have a motion to approve the Bonnaroo Agreement?
I so move.
And I'll second.
Cordell, Mr. Gillie. Any discussion?
How much do we get off of this, well?
It's in their contract.
Twelve thousand dollars, four thousand, twelve, twelve thousand, twelve.
And we did raise that last year, so.
Yes.
People at, people at home that don't, can't see this, so that's why I'm trying to ask them for. So we get twelve thousand dollars for a week, for a week, is it for a week? Well, for the time they're there from June.
Ten days.
Ten days. Uh, June seventh through June sixteenth. Of course, part of that time, Mr. Hanser did him setting up and taking down. So it doesn't mean there'll be people in and out there every day like it would be during the timeframe. Just trying to clarify that for people at home.
Always good. The home YouTube audience.
That's right, the home YouTube.
They're enjoying their pizza that they ordered at the beginning of the meeting.
No, they went to bed by now.
Maybe.
Door dies.
Yeah, miss, maybe Mr. Damewood can tell us who, who has dropped off this, this stream, so. All right, um, do we have any discussion on this? All right, so, uh, I think we're back to Mr. Gillie.
Uh, to vote?
Yeah, to vote.
Aye.
Ms. Cordell, Ms. Inch.
Aye.
Mr. Hanser.
Aye.
Ms. Jones.
Aye.
Uh, Ms. Hodge, she left, right? Okay, um, all right. Ms. Matthews?
Aye.
Mr. Coon.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. That passes eight to zero. All right, moving along to the topic of.
Mr. Ballard, Mr. Ballard, I'd like to interrupt. Uh, we've got a couple student ambassadors just getting laid.
Yeah, and it's a school, yeah.
Yeah, this is a, this is a long one.
I apologize, that's me, they're.
We don't want to mean to torture them anymore, so. Well, we can, we can make an exception to and, uh, move some things around on the agenda, let them speak now, so. So they can go. You've gotten the full experience anyway.
Thank you, Charlie.
Yeah, so go ahead and grab a microphone and. And thank you for your patience. This has been kind of a, a long one.
My name's Lauren Shelton. Um, I'm a part of SGA, FBA and DECA. So our girls' basketball has, um, one going to state on Thursday, March thirteenth at eight forty-five PM at MTSU versus Bradley Central. Coffee County Wrestling sent for four, sent four wrestlers to the state wrestling meet. Alicia Jennings, Jasmine Norris, Gianna Bear and Aiden Lindsay competed. Alicia Jennings placed third, Gianna Bear placed sixth. Swimmers, oh, El- Elsie Lyselier, Jack Stowe and Leonia, Leonia Zank qualified for state and were gone February sixth and seventh to swim at the University of Tennessee at Knoxville. The first home tennis match is tomorrow versus Franklin County at three PM. Dance tryouts are April, April seventh through eleventh for next year. The boys' soccer team has their first district game on Thursday versus Shubsville at home. And then the first home baseball game is tonight at six PM. The softball game, they play at home tomorrow versus Seagull. And that is all for the sports.
All right.
Hi, my name's Amelia Thomas and I'm in DECA, SGA and cheerleading. Um, Tuesday, February twenty-fifth, the fine arts department had their fine art, fine arts night where they had a live art, live art wheel, displayed artwork from high school students as well as CMS and WMS art for sale. The chorus and the band performed and the winter guard performed. The theater department is also putting on a performance of the musical, The Mystery of Edwin Drew. And the performances are March seventh through the ninth and fourteenth through the sixteenth. The times are seven PM for Fridays, seven PM for Saturdays and two PM for Sundays. The tickets are twelve dollars for adults and nine dollars for students or seniors. The winter guard also placed second in the Wilson Central Winter Classic on February fifteenth. Our student, Jones Wagner, was one of three students chosen from across the state to be a presenter at the Tennessee Coordinated School Health Institute. He represented the Teen Health Advisory Council by giving a ten-minute presentation and introducing the keynote speaker for the event. During the, we, oh, sorry. Thirty-six students attended the DECA State Conference in Chattanooga two weeks ago. Raleigh Clark and Raleigh Evans qualified for ICDC DECA Nationals in Orlando this April. SGA is holding a You're So Golden Extravaganza Kindness Project, March seventeenth through the twenty-first. The week before spring break is St. Patrick's Day and we wanted to do our kindness project on theme. You're So Golden is the sentiment of the week. Our goal is to watch students and faculty spread joy and show how lucky we are to have such golden people in our lives. The extravaganza will begin with SGA students and staff giving a golden egg to someone they are lucky to know, which will include a handwritten compliment and candy inside. Once a person has been gifted a golden egg, they will visit the You're So Golden Extravaganza refill stations in the cafeteria or the SGA room with their golden egg. The refill stations will only be open to students during homeroom and in lunch. And students will write something kind about a friend or a staff member of their choice to put in, in their golden egg and will pass the golden egg off. At the refill station, you will also write the name of the person who gifted you your golden egg on a gold coin, which will be added to a pot of gold on a bulletin board in our school. On the last day of the challenge, anyone who has shared kindness this week can see their name in the pot of gold.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Run. You can stay if you want.
Thank y'all.
All right.
If I could sneak out and nobody see me.
Yeah.
We love our student ambassadors.
Thank y'all so much. Proud of y'all.
All right. Next item on the agenda is art teacher. And that is, the champion of that particular topic is Beth Inch. So you are, you are on to explain what.
I explain first and then.
You explain first and then we make a motion.
All right, um, I have noticed for many years that we don't have art teachers in our elementary schools. And so I began to, um, do an investigation on surrounding counties and cities. And I found that every single county and town that touches Coffee County has art teachers in their elementary schools. Now, a lot of them have art teachers in every school. And then there are those who have to share art teachers between schools. But those are few and far between. And so Tennessee law, I'm going to read, uh, TCA four-nine dash six dash one oh two five. While state law speaks to visual art and music instruction for grades five through eight, schools also offer courses in dance, theater and media art instructions. A, the course of instruction in all public schools for kindergarten through eighth grade, K through eight, shall include art and music education to help each student foster creative thinking, spatial learning, discipline, craftsmanship and the intricate rewards of hard work. Local boards of education are encouraged to fully implement the art and music curriculum adopted by the Board of Education through both art and music classes as well as integration into other core academic subjects. I had a, a, a teacher reach out to me who does the art club at the high school. And she stated quite accurately, she said, it is a problem if students don't have art in elementary that they are not prepared for the art in middle school and high school. And so honestly, I'm a little embarrassed for our county that we've not been providing this for our students. Um, there are, there's just so much literature, so much research on brain development and art and what it does. It uses so many of the same, uh, areas that is used in engineering that's, um, used in the, um, language arts. The same areas light up on the brain when you're doing art. So it's, it's just a very important field. And so I want to make a proposal that we hire art students. Now, I'm not going to put a number on that because it will be according for a while to what Ms. April can get out of our budget. But I want to make a proposal that we hire art teachers for our elementary schools.
Okay, so do you want to make a motion?
That was it.
Okay, the motion is to hire art teachers for our elementary schools.
Yes.
Okay. Do we need to have a specific number or, or can we just make a general statement, so?
Well, you've got six elementary schools, so that would be six teachers.
Or if the budget doesn't allow it at first, then the, the schools will have to share teachers.
Okay, now that, that, um, I haven't talked with the elementary principals, what their feelings might be toward it. It may have been something before, I just don't know. I haven't had any conversation with them. I do know that it would probably be a scheduling situation for them. Uh, particularly if you have one coming every other day or one every three days, whatever.
Generally, they do it over a nine weeks.
Okay.
Period.
All right, now, I'm sorry, what, what's generally nine weeks?
Nine weeks if they're sharing teachers.
Okay, but in the daily schedule, I'd have to work them into the schedule somewhere. And I assume you're talking about scheduling every grade when they're there that one day, K through five.
I don't know exactly how they do it. Should, do we need to vote on this before?
We, we need to, well, we need to take the motion. So maybe the motion needs to, maybe you need to make the motion subject to schedule and, and budget. So art teachers subject to schedule and budget, something like that.
I know, uh, Ms. Inch, when I, when I started teaching, I was what they called an itinerant teacher. There were three of us. We had music, library and physical education. And we had three schoo-, it was still, still six county schools. We had three schools. I had, uh, Hillsborough, Hickerson and Jones Elementary at the time. And we rotate those every three days. It'd be PE there one day, art there one day, music. That's not too difficult to do because you pretty much have the same schedule for that itinerant person will be coming in like you would every day. It'd be something every day. If you don't have them there every day, then you'd have to go back and start looking at a schedule that would have, if art teacher's there on, say, even two days a week or if you have three teachers. or if you have three teachers, that would give them two schools each, correct? Three teachers each, yeah.
If you had three.
Yeah. Which means that they had two schools, they would, they could either come every other day, or, and I don't know how difficult it would be as far as, I know it's difficult scheduling, let me put it that way. I'm not against it, I'm just saying the scheduling is gonna be a concern, I think, primarily because if you don't have the art program the same time each day for each grade level, or each two grade levels, and there's some schools that there's not enough time, and you're looking, I think we had, what's it got, thirty minutes?
Yes, sir.
I believe thirty minutes, thirty minutes for each program. So, you had a block of time in that school that, say, from, at ten o'clock, you had itinerant time, which was either your music, your library, or physical education. And then, depending on how many different classes you had, sometimes it wouldn't be enough time to get every, every class in there every day because of the size of the school. So, it, it's gonna, it'll be a, it'll be a, a scheduling concern. I'm not saying it'll be, it'll be a problem, but it can be done. So, I think those, those things need to be worked out about, you know, if, say, if you go to Deerfield one day, and maybe you just have kindergarten through third grade that one day, the next day you come, you'd have grades four through si-, uh, four, uh, three, four, and five. That's, you know, that's a possibility of scheduling. But that, we something we need to look into. So, you know, you say you go back and gonna talk to April about the budget, you know, she can work, she can work six in to tell you what it would cost to have six additional teachers, and that's what, what it would boil down to.
Well, April and I have already talked a little bit, and it doesn't look like it's in the budget for a teacher in every school this year.
Well, now, I, I can agree. There's, there's not anything in the budget for them right now. It'd just be a matter of her having to put them in there.
Right, right.
Either two, four, six, whatever number you might wanna put in. So, I guess the board would need to decide what, you know, how many do you, you want? One per two schools, or one per school?
Oh, I'd love to have one per school. But realistically.
Ideally, one per school would be.
Might be enough left for a system-wide AD.
One, one per school would be ideal, because that way you're, they'd be there every day.
Oh, it would be ideal, but as to whether they could be fit into the budget, I.
We could fit them in if you wanna pull it out of.
Yeah, we need a workable motion.
Unappropriate surplus.
What was that?
We need a workable motion here.
I'm sorry, I'm, I'm aggravating you.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to move this along, that we pursue the, putting art teachers in the elementary school, but let's kick it over to a committee to come up with a viable plan with scheduling, the number, you know, so that we have something to work with.
Well, Beth had already made a motion.
I, I think if, if.
We haven't had a second, so, what's that?
I said, "That's a good motion." I'll take my motion back.
Okay, then, alright.
I think we can, the, the schools can, can make plans if you tell us how many you want in there. I mean, they can make the plans for it, that's not a, not a big concern.
We gotta approve the funding of this, right?
If you want three teachers, four, or six schools, then we'll make arrangements for three for six, or one for six.
Well, we'd have fine funding to come up with the, the number, yes, absolutely, so.
Because we don't have, we don't have this, an art teacher position in our system, correct?
Yes.
In, in high school, I think we do, but I mean, as far as a.
We have a, we have a general description for art teacher in the school system.
Okay.
It wouldn't be any different, Robert, than having a description for a teacher.
So, you have a job description, we just need to look at the budget.
We have a job description for an art position, our art teacher in our, in our system, yes.
Yeah.
But it would be, you know, depending on what level it is, it's, it's not broken down into elementary, and it's, of course, secondary is all we have right now.
Okay.
Yeah.
And I'll be honest, I'm not sure whether they have anything at the middle school, or.
They do.
We do.
And Ninth Grade Academy.
Middle school and high school.
Alright, let's get a motion on the floor here, so.
I thought you had one.
I'm sorry, Chris, I didn't mean to interrupt you.
Oh, that's fine. I make a motion that we.
He's got the motion. Mr. Gilli made the motion.
Uh-uh. New mail, new mail.
She made a motion, but she withdrew.
No, I withdrew my motion, and Chris made.
She withdrew hers.
Yeah, there was no second yet on it, so.
I make the motion that we put forth a plan of putting art back in the elementary schools, but let's kick this to a committee to work with the administration to develop a schedule and to, you know, to finalize everything before it comes back to, you know, for us to vote on, so that we have something to vote on.
Okay, I agree with that. So, we would have.
We have a, excuse me, I'm sorry. We have a principal's meeting on the thirteenth, and we'll work through that on the thirteenth, and we'll be ready to go back for the April fifteenth board meeting, if you wanna try to put it back on the fifteenth.
So, the motion would be to refer this to committee for further study? Would that?
I think the only study we need is to, how many do you want?
Well, how many do you want, and what the budget's gonna be?
Exactly, I think April will have to be a part of that committee.
Alright, so.
So, I won't know how mu-, like, so, April fifteenth is the budget, when, when you guys vote on the budget.
Well, but you want, yeah, exactly, you won't know what's available to pull from, but they gotta have a number of how many they want, and what we're gonna pay, right?
I think to start with six would be unreasonable, you know, adding six teachers.
Regular teacher salary, okay, as long as it's noted, that's.
Yeah, it, it's a regular teacher salary.
So, if you're looking at, like, a, I don't know what range they would be in, but like, just a general number to talk about benefits and salaries, I'd say between, like, for benefits, I'll talk about medical, dental, vision, retirement, everything. And their salaries are like, around sixty thousand would be probably, very low-scale person to ninety. So, depending on who you got with experience, so that's probably a good range. So, you take those numbers times six, and you think about, none of those, none of these schools have art supplies, or things to store them in, so that would also be a startup cost. And I have no idea what to even, what I would even begin to, I would have to get with Ms. Sizer.
If they're going from school to school, would they need a mileage supplement?
Yes, and then, so if they, if we only hired three, and they were back and forth between school, that would be a mileage, they would get mileage, like, we currently have some teachers doing that now, but, yeah, so, just.
Couldn't you schedule it so that it's one day, where they don't have to go back and forth on the same day, just scheduling it one school? I mean, that, we could, that could be worked out later, but.
If you have one per school, then you'd need a mileage allowance.
Well, and if they just went to school per day, you know, if they were just, they wouldn't need mileage then either.
That, that's the way it was whenever, we was, he was with me, when I was with you, I guess, at East Coffee, it was, they stayed the whole day. And then we had, then it, they rotated, they was there the whole day.
Unless they go to two different schools the same day, there would be no mileage allowance for them at any time. Okay.
So, I wanna, can I just say one more thing? So, I'll present you a budget before that time, so, there will not be, unless something, like, passes tonight, there will not be anything in the budget that I present on April the tenth for art. So, we would have to do, we'd have to come back in July and make an amendment to that budget.
That can be done, I don't know.
That can be done.
Isn't that a little late to be hiring art teachers, though?
I'm sorry.
Because i- isn't that a little late for hiring art teachers? Because if we want them for next year, they're gonna have to be hired coming out of school.
Yeah.
Which is the end of May.
Yeah, yes.
Yeah.
It's a lot, short, short period of time to do a lot of budget.
Hold on a minute, let, let's get a motion on the floor here, because.
I thought we had two or three.
Well.
I make a motion that we, to, to move this forward, put an art back in the elementary schools, would be that Ms. Yinch, Ms. Melson, um, get with the, the principal meeting, and see if we can come up with a working schedule. And that way, we'll have the number of teachers we need. Ms. Melson can work on the budget and present back in the April meeting.
I'll second that.
Alright.
Okay.
Mr. Coon, Mr. Gilli. Melissa, can you read that back? That's right.
Okay, sorry, I had to finish it.
It's great.
Okay, so, we have a first, and a, um, okay, and a second, by Mr. Gilli. Motion is to put forth a plan to put arts back in our elementary schools and set up a meeting to get a schedule with Ms. Yinch, Ms. Melson doing budget at the principal's meeting, to work on schedules, and Ms. Melson will report back in the April meeting.
Which April meeting? So, we have a works, we have a retreat and a, and a.
Probably a board meeting.
Board meeting.
That will be before.
Is the retreat before the board meeting? We could do it at the retreat. We could do it at the retreat.
And then vote on it in the board meeting?
So, what I could do is, I could present a budget without art teachers, and a budget with art teachers. But I, I still don't know what number to, I don't know, still don't know what number to use, because I.
Well, we can work out those details, we, we do have a motion on the floor, so.
So, do you want one meeting or one session?
I think it was work session, I think.
Is the, is the.
Work session first?
Retreat is first, I think, before the board meeting?
Oh, man.
So, the spring retreat's before the board.
So, would you be?
Spring retreat, and then we can discuss it.
And then vote out at the board meeting?
Yes.
Alright, so, yeah. Alright, that is the motion. Do we have any discussion? We've already had our discussion, so.
I'm, I'm gonna call question.
Okay. Um, alright, so, I lost track of who starts here. Mr. Cordell, we're calling the question, so we're voting to terminate discussion.
Aye.
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 I'll vote aye, so that is, the, the discussion is closed. We will now vote, so, I believe we are back to Mr. Cordell.
Aye.
Ms. Yinch.
Aye.
Mr. Hansert.
Aye.
Ms. Jones.
Aye.
Uh, Ms. Hodge.
She's not here?
Oh, she's not here, huh? Ms. Matthews.
Aye.
Mr. Coon.
Aye.
And I will vote aye, so that.
You forgot me, sir, but that's okay, aye.
Okay. I got too many scribbles on my paper here.
I'm just so quiet down here, it's so easy to forget.
Yeah, yeah, got that, okay.
Ms. Best, if you don't mind, what I'll do, our principal's meeting on the thirteenth is pretty well full. I'll, we'll just have a special meeting set up when you and April and I, and the principals can, the elementary principals can meet. I'll get, you can get a date for that.
Okay.
A meeting, a meeting on the thirteenth is, is pretty well full right now. We've got some safety issues coming up we've got to discuss. We've got a, someone coming in to talk with them about some curriculum programs and so forth, but I'll get with us, and I'll get with you, and we'll get a time just to meet with the elementary principals.
Okay, sounds good.
About an hour, you think, maybe? Two at the most.
They'll be thinking about it before they come in, I'm sure.
Yeah, I'll, we'll tell them about it next week, and then they can be thinking, we'll set up after that.
Mr. Skipper, thank you very much for your patience. I hate to wake you up.
I think he just, I think he just wants a motion. If so, I'll make the motion to, to approve Agenda Item Number Eleven.
Okay, Mr. Gilli makes, this should be non-controversial, but I always say. Do I have a second?
Oh, I'll second if he's not asking for any money.
Okay, any discussion? Mr. Skipper, you really need this?
No, I need it, it's not for me, it's for the students, it's a certification type deal. It's basically, uh, we've had one for, we've had a toolbox, uh, probably fifteen years ago, I bought one. It's through Snap-on, it's a, I don't know if it's soul so-, it's soul source, but it's also on the, the buying.
Sourcewell?
Yeah, Sourcewell. Um, the first one I bought fifteen years ago was twenty-nine thousand, this one's now, it's forty, forty-eight, so. But basically, each drawer is a certification of measurements, whether it's depth, depth mics, or calipers, or measure tapes, and so are, um, now that I've added industrial maintenance, uh, Mr. Hinshaw, who's called it before, is retiring this year, so I, I got TCAT to pay for my, two of my newest instructors to get trained, certified, and to teach it, and so I just need another box. I, I have some leftover ISM money, um, for the Redder Academy, that is gonna be up, so this is me just spinning it.
Alright, any discussion?
Who got the first and the second?
Uh, Mr. Gilli, and then Ms. Yinch. Alright, so, Mr. Hansert.
Aye.
Ms. Jones will, and Ms. Hodge is not here, Ms. Matthews.
Aye.
Mr. Coon.
Aye.
Mr. Gilli.
Aye.
Mr. Cordell.
Aye.
Ms. Yinch.
Aye.
Alright, and I will vote aye, that passes seven to zero.
You want just a motion first, and?
What's that?
Fine with me.
Yeah.
Thank you, Skipper.
I just, I'm just honored I'm at the end.
Alright.
Well, of, of, of these type of things. The budget's always at the end.
People are worn out asking questions, so you won't get many questions, maybe. So, internet connectivity contract, that, item twelve on your.
I do wanna do, do a little bit of an explanation. Right now, we have a contract with Zayo, who used to be ENA, we've had them for eighteen years. There's been some issues, blah, blah, blah. There's a new vendor in town, and they won a contract with Anderson County Schools. E-rate, it, there's rules, there's all kinds of bidding. We can piggyback, simple piggyback off the Anderson County bid. What I'm asking, and if you look at the overview, that's pretty much the recommend, the, the way the motion could read, that we continue with our current contract, and if everything is favorable with UDT, that we can switch to them at some time next year, during the next year. It's hard to, there, there could be fifty or sixty school systems that go with UDT, and they can't fire everybody up on July first, which is what E-rate, they don't demand, but that's when the clock starts again. And so, we're gonna file with ENA, which is more expensive, for eleven months, and then the twelfth month, we could go with UDT, but if we go to UDT in the fourth month, then we just get the cheaper rate. But that covers, that covers our filing, because E-rate pays eighty percent of our internet cost, and if you look down there, that's per month that we, that, so we're four hundred thousand dollars a year for our internet cost, but E-rate pays roughly eighty percent of that. So, by doing that motion under the overview, that gives us an option.
So, and you're recommending then UDT?
That's what I recommend, but the director is probably the one that really needs to recommend it.
If Mr. Dane Wood says it's so, it's so.
Okay.
Then I so moved, Mr. Chair.
Alright, Mr. Gilli.
I'll second.
And Mr. Cordell, any discussion? Seems pretty straightforward, alright, um, uh, Ms. Jones.
Aye.
Ms. Matthews.
Aye.
Mr. Coon.
Aye.
Mr. Gilli.
Aye.
Mr. Cordell.
Aye.
Ms. Yinch.
Aye.
Mr. Hansert.
Aye.
And I will vote aye, that passes eight to zero.
Okay, I need to ask the video production crew to turn off the audio for a second, so just give, just give me a chance to talk to them.
Alright. Turn on the sound. April becomes the star of the show for a while here, so you are on.
Are we on budget amendment nine?
Yeah, yes, we are.
Okay, so this budget amendment, um, does not affect fund balance. Um, it is basically, um, as I work through the budget, I'm estimating, going through estimating lines in the budget, figuring out where we need to add, where we need to add funds to get budget in line, um, by the end of the school year. Um, so you can look at the back page and it gives you the reasons of why the lines were, are increased. So first of all, to explain it, the very first page down to the total line, that's where I'm taking the money from. And then the second page to the end is where I'm putting the money at. So basically, I'm decreasing some lines in the budget, increasing other lines, um, for medical, vision, dental, retirement, life insurance. I had some salary lines that I had to adjust because I, either we had years of experience we didn't give for our classified, or there were, um, I estimated, I used, I made a mistake on the salary line. Um, there was some software we had to purchase, we need to increase our bus parts, software for our bus, for our bus route, um, transportation supplies, utilities, transportation devices, and a grant. We received a grant, so I was bringing that into the budget. So that's the basic summary. I will take specific questions about any lines you have on this budget amendment. But basically, this does not affect fund balance, this is just general moves I'm making to clean up some lines within the budget, um, before the end of the school year.
So do we have a motion to approve this, to a budget amendment?
I so move.
One dash twenty twenty-five dash nine?
A second.
You call it a mail, may you know that works?
I should just write you in automatically. Alright. Uh, Ms. Jones. So, um, any discussion? Looks like this is just moving things around and kinda tidying up the budget.
You may see one more as we get closer in May or June. I hope not, I tried to, I tried to clean everything up in this one, but you might see another small one between now and the end of school year.
Alright.
For cleanup, you'll see other things, but the, for the cleanup.
Okay, I'm losing track, uh, Mr. Coon?
Aye.
Mr. Gilli?
Aye.
Mr. Cordell?
Aye.
Ms. Yinch?
Aye.
Mr. Hansert?
Aye.
Uh, Ms. Jones?
Aye.
And Ms. Matthews?
Aye.
I'll vote aye, that passes eight to zero. Alright, budget amendment one forty-one dash twenty twenty-five dash ten.
Mr. Chair, I would like to make the motion when we get our description of this.
When we what?
When we get our description of this from Ms. April, I would like to make a motion. I'll let her speak first.
Alright.
Uh, so this is budget amendment number ten, and this is for the interim director's contract. Um, basically, I was able to find funding within the budget, so it does not affect fund balance. Um, you will see that the lines on the top were where I took the funds from, and then the bottom is where I'm adding the funding to contend, to pay his contract out of. There was, um, they, he will have some vacation time that I'm not sure that he will be able to use by the end of the school year. So that, that's why the salary line is more than the ninety thousand from now for October to June. Um, basically, I'll take any questions you have on this budget amendment. It's pretty standard, it's what's in his contract, um, and it does not affect fund balance.
Mr. Gilli has made a motion to approve?
Uh, Mr. Chair, I would like to make a motion to approve this budget amendment, but I would ask respectfully if we could withhold as much discussion on this topic, topic as possible as we are all waiting on an executive decision from our attorney on some items.
Alright. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Ms. Jones seconds? Alright, well then, limited discussion. And thank you very much for finding the money, boy, that's like magic.
Yes, so we had some additional teachers in the budget that we didn't use, and then we had some, you guys approved us to use interim, to pay interim teachers, um, certified rate at the beginning. We didn't use all of that funding, so I was able to find what I needed to, to go ahead and take care of this instead of using fund balance.
Okay. Well, that may, may quell some of the county commissioners' fire, I guess, so. Okay, any further questions for April on this? Let us, let's go ahead and vote, Mr. Gilli?
Aye.
Mr. Cordell?
Aye.
Mr. Yinch?
Aye.
Mr. Hansert?
Aye.
Ms. Jones?
Aye.
Ms. Matthews?
Aye.
Mr. Coon?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, that passes eight to zero. Okay, next budget amendment.
Budget amendment number one forty-one, twenty twenty-five, eleven. This is, um, the vacation payout for the previous director. Um, the, this comes with Mr. Kegel, so we did check with Mr. Kegel and he said that we had to pay out his eighteen remaining vacation days. So this budget amendment is to take care of that, and it will happen in June. And we found the money within the budget to do that, so this does not affect fund balance.
Well.
Ms. We ready?
Yeah.
I'd like to ma, make a motion, we approve this budget amendment with the same understanding as the previous motion of limiting debate.
Discussion, second?
I'll second.
Mr. Cordell seconds. Okay. Um. Anything further for Ms. Melson with understanding we're limiting discussion due to attorney?
No, but she's, you're amazing, April. Let me say that.
Absolutely.
Thank you, April.
Alright, Mr. Cordell?
Thank you.
Aye.
Ms. Yinch?
Aye.
Mr. Hansert?
Aye.
Ms. Jones?
Aye.
Ms. Matthews?
Aye.
Mr. Coon?
Aye.
And Mr. Gilli?
Aye.
And I will vote aye, that passes eight to zero. Alright, next, one more budget amendment.
Well, this one is for the bleachers, so you guys did, voted to do the renovation?
Yay!
This one's for new bleachers, so I don't, I don't know that we need to do anything with this one, so this one can-
We should wait until last to vote for my bleachers.
So, so we have this and we don't necessarily need to-
So what I'll do, because you did the modification, I'll pull from, I can pull from furniture-
Okay.
-to take care of the modification, I can just do a budget transfer, Dr. Powell can sign that. So we don't need a budget amendment to do bleachers, this was just if we were gonna do the new ones.
So this requires no action then?
Right.
We strike it then?
Oh, right.
Yeah, love that.
And then there was two.
And then, uh, we didn't use, uh, the last budget amendment, so.
Budget update.
We are off to the budget update, so back to you.
Okay, so budget's on track. In January, we received five point, almost five point two million dollars, which was sixty percent, sixty point nine two percent of budget. Year to date, we've received thirty-one point, thirty-one point seven million dollars. Um, last year to date, we are at fifty-nine, um, a little over fifty-nine percent. Um, state revenue is around three point three million, local is one point five, and then other was around three hundred thousand. So we, um, our budget, revenues are on track, um. We'll start seeing, I think in the next month, we'll start seeing an increase in property taxes, cause it's February update. But, um, as of January, we're on track. And then expenditures, we have used, um, in January, we used four point, almost four point three million dollars, which is forty, uh, year to date, twenty-six point one million, which was forty-seven percent, forty-seven point nine four percent of budget. Last year to date, we were at forty-seven point two eight percent, so budgets, expenditures are on track. I will take specific questions about any lines you have, um, if you have them.
We need a motion to approve?
I so move.
I'll second.
And Gilli, okay. Ms. Jones? And Mr. Gilli, second.
Just pick, I don't care.
It was called between Mr. Cordell and Ms. Jones, but she was quicker. Alright, discussion. Questions for April? Nope? Alright, then, uh, we are, Ms. Yinch?
Aye.
Mr. Hansert?
Aye.
Ms. Jones?
Aye.
Um, Ms. Matthews?
Aye.
Mr. H, Mr. Coon?
Aye.
Mr. Gilli?
Aye.
Mr. Cordell?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, that passes eight to zero. So now we move on to, oh man, I put it in the wrong line, that's okay. Um, the, uh, we moved a couple things from the consent agenda to the, the regular agenda. The first one up is the Lady Raiders Field Trip?
Yeah. Yeah, I asked for that.
And, uh, so, uh, this is for, so let's get a motion on the floor and then we will have Mr. Parsley, um, answer any questions we might have, so.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make the motion that we approve the request for the overnight stay for the, uh, Lady Raider basketball team.
Okay, do we have a second?
I second.
And Ms. Jones seconds?
She got in there!
You're just too slow, give a note. Alright. Any questions, uh, Mr. Parsley, you wanna come up to the microphone and, you know, I think there's some questions.
I think we know what it is, ain't it, don't we? Or, but I don't, yeah. Boss man tell it.
Well, Mr. Parsley, kind of, one reason you got this, uh, normally it takes a seven day workday, as you can see there on the second page. But, uh, we hope this had happened all along, but we did not know for sure, but it has.
We, we thought we might jinx ourselves by turning it in, uh, until we had actually won the, the sectional, so. I, I'm glad to answer any questions you might have, uh, about the request.
I don't have any questions about the request, but about the tickets, is, is it on GoFan or T double S double A?
So, so I know that, well, you know what, that's a great question.
You can.
Can I email you all tomorrow and let you know? I, I'll have that answer tomorrow. We've been trying to get-
You can on GoFan, just, just like the region tickets when we done those, you can do the same thing for the Blue Cross, uh, Blue Cross, Blue Shield.
Blue Cross, I believe that's right.
Yeah.
And of course, you can buy them at the gate, I know, you know, and then some people do.
Were showing a hundred and ten dollars, that's-
Oh, wow.
So that, that might've been for a packet for the whole tournament, so I don't know.
I believe that is correct for the whole entire, every session, everything.
I do know if you just go to the day that our girls play on Thursday, one price will get you into see the three or four ballgames that day.
Right.
So it's not just for our ballgame per se, it's for everybody that's playing on Thursday. And we play at eight forty-five, which is-
I, I fully expect, they, they normally run behind, especially as you get later into the evening, so I, I expect it will be later than the scheduled time.
And how did that happen that we're paying, playing Bradley County when that, we're the two best ones in the state?
We all have our opinions.
The, the state, uh, the T double S double A says that they do a blind draw, um, and so they just draw those out in order. First game is this, second game is this, and we are the fourth of the four games for four A, which is the eight forty-five slot.
Thank you for making that request.
There are no questions.
Questions?
I've, I've got a bunch. I've been bombarded today.
Sure, go ahead.
How was the money, where is the money coming forward to pay for this?
Uh, the money to pay for this would be in the team's account. Uh, there's no, no money coming out of individual school accounts, no money. Uh, my understanding from Coach Cope is there no money to be fundraised at this time. I know there have been multiple donations that have come in in the last few days, including for the busing, the transportation. Uh, so I, Coach Cope assured me that there would be no additional fundraising, uh, needed, they had the money.
And two, uh, uh, one of the things that, and these ladies that was here earlier, uh, talking about our policies that we have not gone by our policies. Uh, I think we may be setting a presidency, a presence here. You know, we've got teams that, that drive to Franklin and everything and they're not staying three days. Most of our football games are in Franklin. And this is, I think that we're sitting, a lot of the parents that I got, and I think some of the other people got the same calls too, is we're setting the presidents here. You know, we're going down there and spending three days when we're thirty minutes from home. And that money could be spent someplace else, because it's the money that they're gonna be spending is, obviously hotels this week is not gonna be cheap. And that's been a concern, and I'd like to hear maybe if somebody else had to-
So they are staying in a hotel?
They, they would be staying in a hotel, and the T double S double A, uh, shares information with, with the schools that make the tournament about hotel accommodations that are available. And so the schools then begin to start to seek those hotels out and make arrangements. Of course, uh, uh, again, nothing formal is done, I mean, there's some tentative things, you know, just sort of waiting to see if we got approval for the overnight. This would be a two, two nights overnight, not three. Uh, it would be for Wednesday night and Thursday night. And, uh, I, I guess just to explain some of the basis of the request, uh, our girls team was fortunate enough to make the tournament last year. Uh, we did not request the overnight stay last year, although the vast majority of the teams that make the tournament do stay overnight during the tournament, and I mean local teams. Moore County, Lincoln County, um, you know, they're no further away really, I mean, maybe five, ten minutes. It, it, they're all in the same vicinity, and it's, it's commonplace to stay overnight. Um, you know, it's, it's sort of the dream the girls have to, to make the state tournament, you know, not many teams do that. And they are fortunate enough to have done.
You keep the team together. You keep them together, you keep them out of stuff, you control their bedtime, you're competing for a state championship. You're not playing just a regular game.
With our game.
We passed, we passed two other overnight trips in consent tonight. And then we wanna pick on this athletic program that we have permitted to go on overnight trips before.
But Robert, here's a problem that, with two ladies just came up here earlier, it was talking about our policies. Are we gonna go by all of our policies, or we're gonna go by some of them?
What, what part of policy are you talking about? You need to give a clarification of that we can or can't in policy.
Talk to me like I'm a man.
I am, I'm time talking.
I'm just telling you, and I'm not the only one here that got these requests today. You know, and we had two ladies earlier that talked about our policy. We had got supposed to have a seven day policy. We don't. Are we gonna go by some of our policies, or we're gonna go by all of them? Or we're gonna pick and choose what policies we go by?
Could I?
Yeah.
You know, you know, if, if I could, there are, there are situations where you simply don't have the seven days. I, I, I am aware of the policy you're referencing, and, uh, that, we've had that policy for, I don't know how long. And, and it may have gone from fourteen to seven, or may have gone from seven to fourteen. We have had a number of days set. Sometimes situations occur that you can't predict. Uh, we have, we, thi- this would not be setting a precedent, and I, I guess to give you examples, in our career in technical support organizations, sometimes teams, you know, will make this or that competition, and then we suddenly have to get, uh, permission, you know, in a short timeframe in order to, to travel. Uh, this is not the first time that this has happened for a sport. It's the first time recently, yes. Uh, but definitely not the first time that there has been a request with less than seven days.
Okay.
And if we had known, we, we, you know, if we had known, we, we wouldn't be requesting it this year.
There is, there is one other thing, uh, thi- this was actually a policy that got changed, uh, I think it's either last year or the year before, that the executive committee, and I was kinda shocked that actually it came to the board meeting, because number, uh, nine, to evaluate field trip requests when travel plans must be made before the next regular scheduled board meeting, and you're supposed to be able to get things to the board meeting prior to. So it, it didn't make it to the board meeting agenda and time, so really, the executive committee could've made this decision without coming before the board. And this was thrown in today, and I was thinking, why didn't it go just to the executive committee?
Exactly.
And that, that policy of making that decision is actually one point three zero one, and it's number nine.
Last year, one of the calls I got today was the girls went to the state, they didn't stay two days.
They didn't stay at, they did not last year, there was no request, and they missed out on that experience last year. And so we are requesting it for this year.
Not that it makes a lot of difference, but back in ninety-three, when our girl- Not that it makes a lot of difference, but back in ninety-three, when our girls went to the state championship and won it, our girls stayed there all week long. They stayed down there for five days because my daughter was involved in it. No, sir. How many did they stay then, Scott? Overnight? No, sir. Okay.
My understanding is that it was, they stayed Friday night when it started snowing, but I know they stayed Friday night because it was in the championship on Saturday.
That's correct. They did stay Friday night. That's one of the causes we all got today.
Some of them drove home, but not everybody, but they took it upon themselves at that point, and technically on Friday, that's after, that's after school, so, you know, if they want to stay, they want to stay, and their parents paid for it.
They stayed more than one night, I know, because my daughter was involved in it, and she was away from home more than one night, and I can't give you chapter and verse, so.
If I could, what teams are typically doing, you know, when they are, you know, staying for the tournament? Of course, they would watch some of the games of the other teams. Teams that don't make the tournament are at the state tournament to watch, and so that would be part of the experience that the girls get. You know, I'm sure they would have various team meals together, probably not every meal, but I'm sure they would have some of those. It would be team bonding, they would, you would keep the group together, I'm sure, if not all, the vast majority of the time, and, you know, the idea is that it helps you, you know, tournament week. Last year, that wasn't the mindset, that was not what we sought to do, and again, just a different, different way of going about it this year. I will say this, on, you know, on the girls' behalf, there's nearly a four point O GPA when you combine all of the academics for the young ladies on that team. This year, the varsity team has not missed any school for athletic competition, so this would be the first and the only request for overnight.
And I think we have had CTE students that have stayed overnight at various places.
Oh, sure. Several nights.
We approved two, we approved two groups ago with students during weekdays.
Mr. Parsley?
All ready tonight.
Ask a couple of questions or just say a couple of things. First of all, big shout out to the Lady Raiders. Congratulations, not only for basketball, but those GPAs. So, I'm very proud. They represent us very well. But I wanted to ask, do we have substitutes lined up for those two, two and a half days for the four coaches?
So, so the answer to that is no, because we don't know, we don't have the approval yet, so we don't know.
But we know we're missing part of Wednesday and all of Thursday.
So, so we know, well, we know, they would be, tentatively, we would like to leave a little after two o'clock on Wednesday.
Do we think we can get subs?
Uh, so, yes.
I know we're in a shortage.
We, getting, getting the Wednesday afternoon covered will be a cinch, and that's because the team is together seventh period, so the coaches for the team, for the most part, are already with them, for the most part.
Okay. Another, and, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Well, and Thursday and Friday, I'll be honest, I have not looked into specifics about sub coverage for Thursday and Friday, but I am confident that we will have those classes covered.
Okay. Just one more thing, a shameless plug here for the cheerleaders, were they invited to go and stay the two nights?
Well, there, there has, there has not been a request to do that.
I would love to see.
There, there hasn't been.
That's on their coach and their leader.
I know, I know that, Robert, I know that. It's cool.
Call them up.
But I just wanted to ask if they were given the same opportunity that our basketball players, if there was a request.
If there was a request, that would be strongly considered, and, you know, I'm sure an argument could be made for that.
Okay.
Mr. Parsley, you said that the game won't be until eight thirty at night?
Well, so it is, my recollection is that it is scheduled for eight forty-five, someone correct me if I'm wrong, on Wednesday, on a Thursday night.
So they would need to stay overnight rather than coming back that late.
Well, so, so the request is to stay overnight on Wednesday night and Thursday night, and in our minds, if we were to come back on Thursday night, I mean, I feel confident that the game will not be over before eleven o'clock. It will not start on time. Let's say they get back at midnight. Well, you have school the next day. Now, but, but to be honest, as I've said, you know, teams are going and watching the tournament, even if they weren't staying overnight, there's no reason that they would not be allowed at the school level to go and watch the tournament like all of the other schools do. So really, this is about an overnight.
The policies are not meant to be inhuman, if you know what I mean. We still need to take the policies, and when it needs a merciful answer, we need to have a merciful answer. So I, I'm not opposed with occasionally if we need to bending a policy for the sake of the students.
That's true.
Well, I don't think we're bending a policy.
I don't feel like there's be, any policy being broken. I mean, the policy calls for the executive committee to approve.
In a rough circumstance, it calls for the executive committee, so we're technically breaking policy by being here at this point, right?
Yeah, that's true, Robert.
Yeah. Can I?
Oh, go ahead.
Well, I just had one question. Was, also, they have, it's my understanding, they have Middle Tennessee Christian, that they have their gym, that Coffey County will have exclusive opportunities to do some practicing, some warmups, and some things between games, whatnot.
Coach Cope told me, yeah, you're correct. Coach Cope told me that, again, alternative based upon approval to do things, but we've received tentative approval to use Middle Tennessee Christians' gym for walkthroughs and practices and things like that during the time that they are there for the tournament.
And to Mr. Shore's point, you know, I, it could have been approved by the executive committee, but there was enough questions that we felt that, because, you know, I got a number of calls and stuff, so we felt it should probably be on the agenda, so that's, that answers, but you're, you're right, you know, that we could have done that, but with enough questions, it should, should have been on the agenda, so.
Like I said, don't kill the messenger. I mean, there's, we were all bombarded with questions today because there's a, there's a past.
Oh, man, you ain't lying.
You know.
But the opposite, just so you know.
Yep.
You know.
Well, all I know, that gym was full.
Yeah, I mean, just, just because you speak it, people talk to us too, in, in, in support. Mothers and fathers and everybody of their students playing sports.
Robert, I didn't say that they didn't.
Yes, you did. And then you turned and looked at me as if I shouldn't have spoke. Well, we're all, it's touchy. It's touchy, and we got, me and you've agreed to disagree many times.
And it's, and it's getting late, so, yeah. So, any further questions for Mr. Parsley? If not, let's, let's take it to vote. So, I believe, I'm just making it up at this point, Ms. Jones, to approve the field trip.
I can see that.
Ms. Matthews?
Mr. Coon? Mr. Gillie?
Aye.
Uh, Mr. Cordell? Mr. Cordell? Okay, I didn't hear you, I'm sorry. Ms. Yench?
Aye.
Mr. Hanser?
Aye.
And I will vote aye, and that passes eight to zero. Okay, thank you, Mr. Parsley, for staying so late to answer.
Thank you, Mr. Parsley. Thank you.
Next item up is textbook selection that got moved off the consent agenda, and Ms. Yench, you want to address that?
Yes, please. I had asked them to move it off the consent agenda because I was looking at the policy on our textbooks, and apparently, first of all, it's very difficult for me to approve textbooks. I've never even had a chance to look through, and so the policy says that the director of schools shall establish a procedure for providing citizens of the community with an opportunity to examine proposed textbooks prior to their final adoption, including public notice of time and location at which the textbooks may be examined. And then it's once that has been done, then the board approves the textbook. So I was just asking for us to put it off until the next board meeting and to actually make them available to the public. That, I think it'll answer a lot of questions that parents may, could come back with later, disapproving or not liking things in the textbooks, if we can get that out of the way now.
So, do you want to make a motion?
Yes, I make a motion that we put off the vote on the textbooks until the April board meeting.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Coon seconds? Okay, any discussion? Mr., Dr. Blessing, do you want to?
I'm just standing here in case you have questions.
Okay. Does anybody have any, any comment on this?
I, I would like to know how you're going to go about making these available to the public so that they can review the textbooks.
I think if you'll look at the ninety-seven PowerPoint slide, just kidding, it's much like the way I did this afternoon. These samples are available online. They can be examined at any time. So like, we can post the steps that I shared with you, and public can review them.
Yeah, that would be great, but how are you going to post that, on the school board's site, or?
It can be posted online, it can be posted on a website, it could, whichever way we deem is better to post it.
Yeah.
Yeah, and then it's available.
Okay, that's just the main thing, that it is posted, and I think that's where Dr. Powell comes in and makes that decision on how it's posted.
I think according to my reading of Policy four point four oh oh, that it says that once we have made our recommendation, so we need to also not only post the samples, but also tell them which ones we're recommending.
Exactly.
So they don't just keep going through randomly and picking stuff that we've already rejected for one reason or the other.
Yeah, that's very true.
And we didn't pick anything this year that wasn't from the state list, right?
No, sir, everything's on the state list. In fact, if it were not, we'd have to do a waiver, and that's nasty.
Yeah, they're hard. All right.
I'm not, I'm not downplaying what the policy says. It was not done that way this year. I'll take responsibility for that, but at some point in time, folks, you've got to accept the fact that we've got professional people that are looking at these textbooks and making decisions on what they feel like is best for our kids and our school system. But no, we did not follow the policy.
Okay. So the motion is to delay the textbook adoption by the board for, till the April board meeting. Is that correct?
That's correct.
And I'm seconded by Mr. Coon, so, any further discussion? Then, Ms. Matthews?
Aye.
Mr. Coon?
Aye.
Uh, Mr. Gillie?
Aye.
Mr. Cordell?
Aye.
Ms. Yench?
Aye.
Mr. Hanser?
Aye.
Ms. Jones?
No.
And I will vote aye. That passes seven to one. All right, that concludes our regular agenda. Thank you for slogging through that. So now we have items for discussion. Mr. Gillie, you want to start?
Why not?
We'll start down there.
Thank y'all. I love y'all. Sometimes I might not like all of you, but we're going to get through this. We're going to do it. We're going to do it. I want to thank everybody for hanging out tonight and seeing this through. I do want to say a word. We lost a great individual today in our, one of our athletic programs, Coach Roger Haynes, our football coach, as far as coaching. He is no longer, I think he has decided to step away and worry about some health and some things, but I want to thank him for his tenure that he has had here, and the hope and good gracious and teachings and the memories and the drive he's left in many of our football players over the last couple of years. Great football coach, and always will be, and I want to thank him for his time here.
Thank you. Mr. Cordell?
Nothing to bring up. Thank y'all for being here tonight and staying the course.
Ms. Yench?
Yeah, I've got to say the same thing. I am amazed that more of you didn't sneak out that door. So, thank you.
Mr. Hanser?
Yeah, I'm the same way. I appreciate everybody staying over tonight as well. I know we've got a lot going on. We know it very well. We're all trying to do what's best for our county, and we're representing everybody, not just half or some or whatever, but whenever, again, I go to every game. I sit beside Prater at the girls' games. I do not have anything against the girls' teams. I go to all the games, home games. You know, I just had a lot of people questioning today, and then, and I think, you know, I feel like that's my job to ask questions. That's what I was elected for. But congratulations to the girls. I wish them nothing but luck Thursday night, and that's all I got.
Ms. Jones?
I, I have something to say, but I've forgotten. I mean, I can't even think of it, but I, I'm like, I'm like, Robert, I love all y'all. I just wish we'd waited till the last thing to vote on those bleachers.
Hey, that's an accomplishment right there. That is worth its weight in seats.
All right, Ms. Matthews?
Well, I just want to say yay for art elementary education. I think that's a big step in the right direction for our elementary schools. I'm so proud that we're getting the ball rolling on that. Thank you, Ms. Beth. And I want to say again how much I appreciate the emails that were so well-written by lots of students this week, reaching out to board members. I am very proud of their courage and them being comfortable to voice their opinions with us, not only students, but teachers as well. So I'm very proud of a lot of our students that went the extra mile to sit down and put the time into it to reach out to us, and I hope their voices were heard, so I'm, I'm proud of that.
I'd just like to say thank you to everybody that's continued to watch the, these marathon meetings that we've been having, and, you know, a big shout out to the Lady Raiders and their accomplishments this season, and hopefully they, they got three more good games left in them. And other than that, I appreciate everybody up here trying to, you know, do what they feel best in their heart to lead this school district.
And I would, I'd like to offer my congratulations to the Lady Raiders too, and also I would say that the theater department at the high school put on a play, and I know they were kind of in the background with the, with the basketball, but my wife and I went, and it was, it was a lot of fun because it was the audience chooses the ending, although I think they cooked the books a little bit when they selected the ending, but it was a lot of fun. So, we can't forget, you know, the arts and stuff, and my wife and I like going to theater, so, and they did a good job. So they got a good theater department over there, and the young lady that played the lead, she had a wonderful voice, absolutely wonderful voice, so, so we like that, and just thank everybody for hanging in there. We've had a lot of marathon meetings, and, you know, the dedication of this crew is exemplary, so I just want to, want to get that out there, if anybody's still watching on YouTube, which.
Well, you're pushing your luck.
So that's, so, committee reports. We had a director search committee, and we did work on the contract. We're going to have to revise that, and it's going to have to be on the April agenda, so we're going to have to hustle on that, so, and that was kind of the main, main topic there, is discuss salary range, which we discussed here, and that, so, was there any other committees? No?
No, but, but I will, I'm on the legislative committee, and there is a Zoom meeting this week, so I'll just share with y'all what, I'm sure you probably already know all the new laws, but it's going to be on some of the new proposed.
Yeah, all right.
The, I know I was kind of heading up the cell phone thing, and the cell phone bill did pass. It's going to be up to us as a school board to come up with a program that we want to go by, and we plan on trying to work on that during the fall retreat.
Spring retreat.
Our spring retreat, yes.
Whatever season it is.
Yeah, whatever season it is. It's a long night, so.
Yeah, thank you for doing that, so. All right, we already had our student ambassador report, so now we're on to the director's report and the capital projects update, so.
I think you have a list of personnel changes over the last three to four weeks. We try to get that out to each board meeting and we've got a lot coming in and a lot coming out. Stephanie does an excellent job with that and a lot involved, more than you think, so. Mr. Parsley mentioned tomorrow, we've got four of our students going to the scope program at Belmont and they'll be coming back next board meeting to report back to you. And they're going to see what a board has to make decisions like you do at this, this board meeting. The processes they go through, God bless.
Pray for them.
Scenarios, you know, and one of them may be the cell phone policy, Mr. Hanser, because what they do, they divide into groups. They go and they meet, they divide up into two teams. One is for and one is against. They debate it back and forth and then they come to consensus on it. And then at the end of the, of that session, they all get back together and tell what each group come up with as an answer to whatever the question may be, and cell phones, yes or no, as an entire group. So it's a very interesting process. I have no idea what the questions will be this year. One of them is probably going to be on cell phones, I would guess, but I don't know for sure. But that's a good program for those kids. We start collaborative conferencing tomorrow at three thirty to five. We meet, we, we've got a short session. We start at, at three thirty, we end at five o'clock. No answers or butts about it. If you're in the middle of the sentence, you stop at five o'clock and walk out the door. And I think we'll have, let's see, one, two, two meetings in March and three meetings in April, and we'll bring that information back to the board for a board meeting to approve or disapprove what we came up with on collaborative conferencing. Basically, it's, it's nothing more than negotiations. That's what it bounced to. The media will bring in their things they want the board to, to react to and to prove or disapprove. Administrators try to try to talk through it as such, and then we'll bring the recommendations back to, to the board to approve. And it doesn't, you don't have to prove any of them or you don't have to even prove all of them. That's, that's your option, but we'll look at that. We have a work session on Wednesday at four o'clock here. President's meeting is on the thirteenth. Top ten percent banquet is on the seventeenth, and I think most of you, all of you should have been invited to that. It's the conference center at six o'clock, and that's the seventeenth. Now, the next two meetings, I'm not sure, the eighth and, the eighteenth and nineteenth. Those have been changed back and forth so much. I've got wide out on top of wide out, so what, what are, what are the, what are the meetings on the eighteenth and nineteenth? Can somebody that knows?
I think one might be a policy meeting and then the other was salary and compensation.
One at a time.
I'm sorry. I, I thought, I saw that one was a policy meeting and then.
One's policy, one is, uh.
Compensation.
Budget and compensation.
I think that's what it was. I'm not looking at it right now.
So which are which?
So the salary and compensation, we have added it to the work session. And I've canceled all the meetings. So do I need to go back and republish it?
I, well, that's kind of what I'd said because I don't think we're going to get through what we need to at the work session. So, because April is only available for an hour. And I think what, so you might want to keep the salary and compensation, certainly keep the policy committee because we're way behind on policy, so.
So the compensation, have we set it for four o'clock?
Yeah, I think so.
On what day? The nineteenth, okay.
And I would, and, you know, and if, if we can get through it in the work session, then, you know, but it's, it's like Scott said, it's so darn hard to schedule these meetings, you might as well just keep it. So that, that would be my opinion, so thank you.
So policy, polish is on the eighteenth. That correct at four, and then salary and compensation is on the nineteenth at four?
Do we know what policies are going to be brought up in that one? In, in the policy meeting, do we know? Okay.
That's what part of that meeting's for, to.
Oh, okay.
To elect the chairman and start.
So it's not really addressing policy?
I hope, I hope those that are on the policy committee have started looking at them because it's only about that thick and there's no way we can get through them.
Okay.
There's no way we can get through them Tuesday afternoon, don't believe. But start looking at those and we'll, we can get what we can get in for the board to reapprove. Spring break is the week of the twenty-third, so we won't be in session then. Our next board meeting is going to be on the fifteenth of April. Me back up on the tenth, we have the retreat starting here at nine o'clock.
Should we start earlier?
I'm sorry. Can we start earlier?
I mean, I don't know because it is a full day. I mean.
The spring retreat? Yes, it's just like the fall retreat.
What time you want to kind of start?
Normally, we start at nine to eleven, somewhere around at nine to ten, ain't it?
I mean, we have started at eight, but the last couple of years have been nine, but I mean, it's tight.
Let's start at nine and we'll see.
What's the date on that, Melissa?
The date is the tenth, tenth.
Thank you.
All right, we'll start the, uh, spring retreat on the tenth at nine o'clock and go until. And then we have a, um, a board meeting on the fifteenth. There's a board evaluation committee at five o'clock on Monday, the fourteenth. Is that correct?
I believe so, yeah.
Okay, Monday, the fourteenth, whoever's on the board evaluation committee will be meeting at five o'clock on the fourteenth. And then our board meeting is on the fifteenth.
So the board self-evaluation at five, I had it was a special call meeting. Are we supposed to already have your board self-evaluations done at that point? Is that what we called that one for?
Yeah, there's, I believe the board self-evaluation has to be a special call meeting, but let's check policy on that.
It does have to be.
It does? Okay.
It can be the only thing on there, so I think that's what it is. So I talked to Brittany at T S B A and she said that she has the questions for the board self-evaluation. And they are just standard across the board.
Okay. So we need to, but we need to get that out and then we have to have, we need to discuss the results, so.
Okay, I'll get those out. So be looking for them in your inboxes.
That'll be scheduled on the fourteenth of April.
Okay.
Is that correct? Okay, at five.
So technically, could we do a special called meeting at four o'clock on the fifteenth? And then close it out and then do the regular meeting? I mean, I'm just trying to think, you know, I, I, you know.
Well, we, we've got to think that we're going to have to start interviewing once these.
Well, that's what I say, on the twenty-second, twenty-third and twenty-fourth is when you're supposed to be interviewing.
Oh, okay.
Director candidates, that's twenty-two, twenty-three and twenty-four of April.
What, what days did you say?
That is on Wednesday, Thursday, no, excuse me, Tuesday, Wednesday and Thursday.
April.
Tuesday, the twenty-second, Wednesday, the twenty-third and Thursday, the twenty-fourth.
Okay, I didn't have that on here.
So you want to do the board self-evaluation on, at four o'clock on the fifteenth?
Well, kid, I'm just trying to think of everybody's time instead of making them come all the way out here for a special meeting that's going to last about thirty minutes. You know, I, I. You know, I, you know, I, I don't know what everybody, you know, but that would be better for people's time.
Okay, move that up to the fifteenth at four?
Yeah. Yeah. That's kind of what I'm thinking, but if anybody.
Well, we need to kind of know what everybody thinks right now because it's hardest. Every time we have to change them, it's we have, Melissa has to repost it to the media.
Right, right. So that's what I'm seeing if everybody has any objections to do it that way.
Good idea.
That would be the fourth, oh, the four, the fifteenth, we'd have the special call.
What time are those interviews, Dr. Powell? What time are those interviews on those three days?
They don't have the time yet, Ms. Beth, I don't know. That, that hasn't been said, I don't.
I bet y'all just decided to send me the schedule.
All right.
What we will do, let me, let me say this, because we had this confusion with these meetings and things. I will get Melissa to, to send you a copy to put out the days that we have scheduled now through March and April.
Thank you.
Okay?
Sounds good.
Now, please, please, if you don't like those days, let us know so we can reschedule them. Or we can talk to somebody, what do we need to schedule, reschedule it for. But we'll get, we'll try to get all these to you folks for, for the month of March and the month of April, right, Ms. Melissa?
Yes.
And we'll try to get it out one day this week at the latest.
I'll have it there.
Okay, and then if you can't, if you're on that committee and you're scheduled to meet, if you can't, let us know or say, I won't be there, but you can go ahead and have the meeting, whatever you want to do.
All right.
Fair enough?
Fair enough.
Good idea.
It's, it's difficult to change these dates and, and have to repost them again to the media. And then on the computer, you've got six different meetings that's been changed four different times.
Yep. Matthew needs to know where he's at.
I'm not trying to be hateful. We need to get this stuff, need to get our act together here. These meetings are pretty, pretty important coming up, in all honesty, as you well know. Okay, I think that's about it unless you have some questions for me.
I, then just, Mr. Shore's capital projects?
Yes. Glad to go over these. Uh, these are the, as far as the sheet that you, you received, it's the same thing that I went over on February, the twenty-fifth at the work session. So unless there's something that you want me to kick on and hit on one more time with those, I've already covered all of them with you. One thing that was, or two things, well, one thing that's not on there is the hot water boilers. That was a emergency situation of getting changed out. That was actually taken care of, that started the install the weekend of January, the seventeenth. Those are finished and up running. And just to let you know that the laminate install has already started for phase two. So they're at our schools putting the, the laminate up as we're, but not as we're speaking because it's nine. But they, they've been installing the laminate. Any other questions on any of these?
The laminate people aren't near as diligent as the school board people.
I apologize, but I just need to make sure that everybody knows in your consent items tonight what you approve, the board scholarships. So if everybody gives on that, so it would be five hundred dollars and divides between all of y'all. So you can just make your checks out to the Coffey County Board of Education and give them to Stacy. Also, the resolution for, um, that we passed tonight, each board member needs to sign it. So you have it up there, so we need to, before you leave, make sure you sign it.
So I have it here. Just stuff to sign.
And I'll try to get Jenna for tomorrow.
Okay.
One other thing quickly, if you don't mind, you talked about giving Mr. Dame Wood some type of compensation for his after-hours work. As of February, the twenty-sixth, he had put in sixty-seven hours of videoing and so forth. And he and I came to an agreement that he would get thirty dollars per hour for that compensation, so. I don't think that needs to be approved because basically we've already said yes to go ahead and do it unless y'all want to formally approve the thirty dollars an hour and then he'll keep up with his time. We'll pay him whenever we get ready. Any questions about that? Is everybody, the consensus okay with that? Can, can that happen, Mr. Ballard?
Yes, I think that works.
And you still have fifty-seven people watching at nine.
Yeah, well, I make the motion with adjourned.
Thank you very much for that. And do we have a second?
Second.
Cordell, seconds. All in favor, stand up.